We'll make note of that, that other committees do that. No, it's fine.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here today. We wanted to give a brief update on the budget today. The governor actually released the final version of the budget. We haven't been able to sift through the entire budget, but do have a lot of the talking points, sort of, of what's in it. This year is, it's very lean. In the PowerPoint that we both prepared for you today, we kind of go through the budget timeline, which I'm sure you all know, but literally will be creeping up on that time where we start that process again. As we just close out the books for this year, we, basically, we start them right up again. So this year's budget, going into it, the economists said that we were in store for a larger growth than what we now can realize what it's going to be. And so after the budgets both passed, the House and the Senate, we went back to the drawing board through Conference Committee and made some very difficult cuts to services. And a lot of the services that were the cuts were made to, it was the cuts of the increases that we made. So most everything, when you look at the state budget, is flat from the previous year, except for the main priorities that we both have and the governor has, and that's to make sure that we spend more money in our local schools and spend more money in our local municipalities. So the two things that were left unchanged were unrestricted aid as well as Chapter 70 aid. And that, I think, is a huge win when we go forward as far as some of the things that, you know, were priorities, that were not fully funded, and that we had to really scale back on a lot of the increases and investments we made in things, you know, such as the anti-opioid drug trafficking program, which only went up $250,000 this year. DCF, which went up $2.7 million, but that also includes a reserve account that hires 450 new caseworkers. So there are definitely good bullet points and good things to hit on in this budget, but we did not invest as much as we would like to, just because of slow revenue growth. A lot of the slow revenue growth is directly based off of capital gains taxes not being realized at the rate in which the economists had first determined they would be. And some of that, in discussions that, you know, we both have had with individuals who are familiar with the situation, just say that with the stock market, as it is right now, a lot of people are not selling. And a lot of the money that they thought that would be realized in capital gains taxes is simply not there. Some other good points, you know, it's an increase of $1.35 billion over the previous year's budget. And when you put that into perspective, health insurance as a single line item for the state went up $1 billion. So you can see how restricted we are in the ability to grow our local, grow our state economy. And, as I said, one of the major bullet points was the fact that Chapter 70 went up 3.9% as a, as a, I believe it was 3.9. She's, 2.8.
No, actually, I think 2.8, it was unrestricted aid was 3.9.
Right. And I'll let Representative Moschino get into a lot of the details, but, you know, it's a flat budget. It's, I think, a showing of some, sort of, peak in recovery from the recession that we had nine years ago. I think we saw this last year and the year before that, that growth is just simply not where it was in the previous, let's say, three or four years before then. That coupled with the fact that we have liabilities inside of both unfunded pension liability schedule inside of the town of Hingham, as well as unfunded pension liability schedules inside of the state of Massachusetts, that continue to increase at a much larger rate than revenues increase. And I think that all of that continuously coupled with the fact that health insurance is rising at a rate that's completely unsustainable and uncontrollable, both in households and in local municipalities and at the state level, is really, is really brought us to where we are today. A lot of the other economic indicators in the state are strong, but realistically expenses are starting to add up, both at a municipal level and at a state level. And that's sort of what we have here in this year's budget, where, again, it's not gloom and doom, but it's definitely not the investments that we wanted to make to our cities and towns and to our state. So with that, Representative Moschino.
Sure. And, sort of, following those remarks, I mean, I think that when you actually look at the Chapter 70 funding, you see that that initial investment that's been made over the past two administrations to really hold harmless our, you know, school-aged children and recognizing that that has always been a strong priority for Massachusetts, for the House and the Senate and for the governor's office, regardless of the administration. So that, that is some comfort, too, I think, to the municipalities. So in your handouts, we just basically put some of the basic numbers on there, so that, just to walk you through it. Chapter 70 funding, we did increase, I think it was 117.9 million dollars over last year. That's the 2.5% increase in the whole of Chapter 70. For Hingham, that came out to be $196,963 in increased funding, which is a 2.8% increase over the last fiscal year. On the downside, though, the per pupil funding was only funded at $30 a student. In the past, we have managed to get that to $55 a student, but at least we were able to get it up from the governor's number to 30, so to try to make that a consistent support. You can see the trends over time. We just thought that might give you a little historic perspective over the past five years to show that the funding has, continued to go up and that that investment is real. But you know only too well how your expenses have increased, so, and as we discussed, healthcare is really the thing that everybody has been watching and is largely concerned about, because we want to do the right thing by all of our employees. But the, you know, as the costs outpace, you know, we're going to have to have some serious talks and some strategies around that. But we also included the number for the charter school reimbursements. Unfortunately, that number did go down a little bit. It's a change in the formula funding that resulted in the lower amount. Fortunately for Hingham, you don't lose a lot of kids to the charter schools, so that number did stay at $17,000, which is $9,000 below last year. So that wasn't too big a hit. The Senate wisely tried to put more than the House did in this time, but the conference, unfortunately, Conference Committee did go with the House numbers. But I think that trying to keep that up and to really hold the public school, the traditional public schools harmless, is something that both Senator O'Connor and I are focused on and that we understand that that can be real struggles. The circuit breaker also saw a $3.9 million increase, but it is important to note that it's only funded at 72.5%, so a little bit below the traditional 75%. But I think, again, that was a recognition of trying to, again, you know, schools do the right thing by their students with special needs, and we're trying to, again, hold the schools harmless for those extraordinary costs that actually trigger, you know, the circuit breaker funding. A little good news, Senator O'Connor and I were able, through the budget process, to get $20,000 for Hingham Public Schools for some new security features. So that was a little bit of good news. It was adopted by the Conference Committee, and so we haven't seen, because it was at the end of the day that the, all of the news about what the governor signed and what he vetoed and what amendments he sent back, so we haven't, we just literally haven't seen it yet, but we will look through it. And I feel confident that the House and Senate will, will make sure that that, those little amounts that are so important to you and to the work that you do and to the police, will get back in there. So we'll do everything that we can to, to make sure that that's, that's in there. Patrick, or, excuse me, Senator O'Connor also talked about the unrestricted aid. We included some of the numbers there, so you could take a look at those, just for your general edification relative to the whole. And then we also included some Senate legislation. I thought if you wanted to talk about that a little bit.
Yeah, upcoming on the 25th of July is the Act Modernizing the Foundation Budget for the 21st Century. And I know that most of you are extremely familiar with the Foundation Budget Review Process, a great staple of education reform in 1993. However, there's a lot of expenses now that were unforeseen in 1993, and I think that this is the time that we start to invest into a new strategy of how much money we need to give back to cities and towns. And I think the core principle of this is making sure that we actually look at health insurance costs. The fact that they're not looking at health insurance costs the way that they should and not judging them off of real data that they can easily get through the Group Insurance Commission off of specifically the amounts of money that are being, that are being sent out in health insurance, I think, is illogical. I think that what we need to do is continue to put a pressure on the state to have some sort of education reform that comes up. And we understand that there is limited dollars available, excuse me, but, you know, when you're talking about 1993, you're talking about 24 years ago. It's time that we do something and we modernize our public education system, especially when it comes to finances, into a, into a new realm. And that's why I sponsored, co-sponsored this bill, this piece of legislation that's coming up. I have a one pager on it that I can leave with you, Chairwoman O'Reilly, and essentially, I think that it goes through a lot of the things that are outdated, in which we get our monies back to our cities and towns. And I think it will also spark the conversation that there are probably a billion to a billion and a half more new dollars that need to be spent on public education here in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to keep up with rising healthcare costs, to keep up with the circuit breaker, to keep up with out of district placement, to keep up with all of the needs that we see, where every single year, coming from a municipal realm, as well as Representative Moschino from municipal government, every single year, we see monies that we wish we could put into reinvestment, into technology, into research, into books, into, into a whole variety of things, staff. But we can't do that because we're restricted with all of these other burdens that I think that if the state played a deeper role into looking into those specifically and allocating new dollars to that, I think we can really bring the school system into the 21st century and, and make all of our school systems exceptional. And, you know, we're both very proud and honored to be able to represent Hingham in such a great job that Dr. Gallo does and the school committee does here and, and all of the parents advocating. I mean, this is, this is one of the exceptional school systems here in Massachusetts. And I think that we can learn a lot from you, and I would love to continue this dialogue, as well as Representative Moschino, as we move forward, to see what the best practices are, to see what we can do better up on Beacon Hill in order to make sure that every child, that one shot that they have at education is going to be the best one that they possibly can. So we appreciate to start this dialogue today.
Any questions, concerns?
So the security money, was $20,000?
Yes.
$20,000. Yeah, no, we appreciate your help with that, especially because last year, we had secured about, like, through your help, $120,000, and unfortunately was cut, and we had already spent some of the money. So we welcome, receive the $20,000, will help us. And please, as I had asked before, continue being creative and, as you hear about, you know, opportunities, new grants and so on, communicate with us and, you know, we appreciate your leadership on Beacon Hill.
And I know that we both are excited that you're embarking on a school building project. And I have, I put a call in to, to the treasurer's office and schools, it's just been a long time since I've ever dealt with anything like that, so, mostly to refresh my memory recollection, but, you know, obviously, the Senator and I will look to work closely with you as that process begins, and, which is exciting, so. And I'll familiar, refamiliarize myself with all of that process and so we can find the best points for advocacy for us to help you move that forward, so.
Other people, I have some questions, but other people have questions? Okay. So on the Foundation Budget Act, and that's great that you're taking a lead on it, we really appreciate it, and, you know, not only healthcare, but special education, English language learners, Hingham faces all the same issues, not to the same extent that, you know, Brockton faces English language learners, but we do have students and they have real needs. And then when you're only doing a few students, we can't, you know, maximize the resources and, and it is a demand on us. We face all those same social issues that are going on. And, you know, like, yeah, it's a billion dollars, but if we can get a new formula place to show the commitment and that the policy is behind the commitment, then we'll find the dollars eventually, but that's really important to make sure people understand this is what we feel is valuable. And so, please press forward. We'll find the money later, but establishing the policy is really important.
Well, to your point, though, I think that by having a fruitful discussion around what the priorities are and making that commitment, that might actually be the kind of thing that would give people trust in government, perhaps, to start to allocate the monies where they could be useful. And it's been so long since we've touched the foundation formula that, I mean, surely the priority, some things we've accomplished, new challenges face us, so, so I, I mean, I think everybody agrees it's a good time to start looking at it, and I think the work that they did on that commission was incredibly fruitful, so, yeah, it'll be a good discussion as we, as we move forward with it.
Am I picking that up?
Yeah, sure.
So with respect to ELL, you know, they have done a pretty good job of giving us some funding through the foundation dollars. On the other hand, they recently have discontinued the funding they were providing for the required coursework that teachers who have ELL learners have to take, they're required to take. And there are also requirements for teachers to continue with their licensure toward full professional license to, to have to take as well. So those were formerly funded by the state, they are no longer, and they're district responsibilities, yet they are requirements. So we could call them unfunded mandates of sort.
Okay. Thank you. So another question I had, parental leave legislation that was talked about in June, I believe, is that for non-governmental organizations? Is it governmental organizations, there's, of mandating paid parental leave?
Oh, that's interesting. I assumed it was everyone, but I wonder if it applies the same way to collective bargaining? Oh, that's interesting. I'm not sure.
We can, we can get you some information on that.
Yeah, I know it was preliminary discussions about it, but for a couple of days, it was every day in the Boston Globe that was being talked about.
Yeah, no, I, I think, I think that paid family leave is something that will be coming up in the legislature. It seems to, you know, continuously will be one of those discussion points that gains a lot of momentum. There's also a lot of interested individuals looking to potentially put this as a ballot question as well. And I know that Senate President Stan Rosenberg discussed that rather than having another ballot question, as we continuously have, a lot of major high policy issue discussions end up with the ballot rather than in the legislature. I think that this is one that we need to do and we need to make sure we get it right for everybody involved.
Yeah. I'm not opposed to it, but we have to manage it.
Right.
And then it, you know, dollars that, you know, they benefit our employees, but with the limited dollars coming for education, it makes our job more challenging. We want to do well by everyone, but as you know, you do too, and then you have to make your choices. So having information about that is, would be helpful. So those were my two big things. Fortunately, you're both very accessible, so we've been able to communicate with you on a regular basis. But we will keep you up to date on foster school. We are talking tonight later in our agenda of appointing more people to our school building committee, which we hope to get going by the end of the summer. And maybe we'll hear from the MSBA in the winter. Hopefully, we'll hear something, but we'll definitely keep you posted on what, what we know about that.
Great.
Well, thank you.
Thank you all very much for your time. We really appreciate it.
Thanks, Pat. Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Go down the line.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks so much.
Nice to see you.
Thank you. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Good to see you again. Okay. Now we'll get back to item number two, approval of minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting that was held on June 5th, 2017.
I second.
Any discussion? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee community outreach forum held on June 19th, 2017.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
A motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on June 19th, 2017.
I'll second that as well.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And finally, a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee working session held on June 28th, 2017.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Questions and comments? Audience comments are always welcome as agenda items are discussed. Anyone have an item? Okay. So we will move on. Superintendent's report. We have quite a few updates tonight.
I'm going to make them quick. Because we do have a long agenda. So the athletic director search is in process. We had our first night of interviews last Monday night, and on Monday morning, oh, excuse me, last Thursday night and Thursday morning, one of the three candidates to be interviewed that night did drop out, was a finalist in another community. So we are, at this point, intending to interview seven candidates of the original 90, we know down through a variety of means. And tomorrow night and Wednesday night will be the next two nights, and that will finish the preliminary interviews by the screening, the search, screening committee. They are likely going to recommend to me three to five candidates as semi-finalists. Central office, at least the three of us here, will interview those semi-finalists on July 24th or 25th. We may need to do it over the two-day period. And we will come up with a finalist or finalists, given the small number, there may be one who's moved forward to be finalist, or there may be more than that. And then on July, on August 1st, which is Tuesday evening, we would plan an open event to the community held at the high school, where if there were one finalist, we would have a reception kind of event, also in the same evening, be able to give the finalist a tour of the facilities inside and out, well, at least inside such as they are, those are the facilities we're hoping to improve over the near future. And, and then have an opportunity, not unlike what we did for the principals, to have the candidate say a few words and respond to, to questions. If there were two or more candidates that would be also finalists, we would do a similar thing, except we'd have to stagger the times when they would be available. So those are both opportunities for the public to see the candidates, and always welcome input after those things if people want to offer particularly something in writing, and then make the decision immediately thereafter, because we're approaching, for most communities, the start of the new seasons, this is the start of football practice, which is in middle August, so it will be a difficult time for other communities to have to make a change at that point. We do have the leeway of having Margaret continue into the early fall when we make the final transition. So we're excited about that. We have an excellent committee, and they put together some questions. Both candidates who came last week complimented the committee's choice of questions, and they said, where did they find those questions? They created those questions. And, and both candidates were impressed with that and with, you know, the thoughtfulness of the process and the variety of people, different constituencies that were involved in the, in this process. Our hiring update, we had invited our new assistant principal for the high school to come this evening. He had a prior engagement, so he'll be here on the 14th, and Rick will introduce him at that point. I will point out a couple of things about him. It's, it's really his first kind of administrative job. He did administrative internship at Wellesley High School, but he comes to us having been a special education teacher at Wellesley High School. So, given our audience here tonight, I think people will be interested to hear that. And those of you who didn't know that the Plymouth River candidate is also, has a special education background, I think we've got a good set of candidates in those, those kinds of roles. We still have a number of roles in the various buildings to fill, but those are the main ones in terms of administrators. I would also point out at this time that we do intend, again this year, to have our orientation, our two-day orientation for new members at, at the middle school this year, and it'll start about eight in the morning with coffee and others and continue with the program. Also, I'm not going to announce, but we have a very special guest who will be the speaker that day, so we hope you all will be able to.
You're incentivizing us.
What was the date of that? What's the date?
The date of it is the 30th.
30th, okay.
The, oh, excuse me, the orientation is the 28th. And the, but the speaker is for the convocation, and that is on the 30th.
Oh, the speaker is the convocation.
Yeah. The orientation will be for all the new staff on the 28th. Convocation will have the usual set of activities that will happen that day, but the guest, there will be a guest speaker of note. That's all I want to say about that. So we're proceeding along with, with hiring those people, and we have an unusual number this year, support staff in particular. How many custodians, John, have we had overall? There are four posted right now, and due to retirements and people moving and leaving and, you know, whatever, people who've changed jobs do, so.
I think there's just one retirement and then the rest is sort of movement, and then there was a promotional opportunity that somebody got.
That's right, and that opens up.
That created two, but then they move to another position, someone moves, so then we have to backfill that, so there's a domino effect.
And we always have a turnover of paraeducators, and, and they move to, most of them, teaching positions, which is perhaps what they really wanted in the first place. And we take advantage of hiring a number of them, and they come to us then with knowledge of our programs, with some good experience working and very good classroom teachers, and so that hiring tends to sometimes be later, as those other movements all settle down. We often are hiring those up until the last, the last minute. DESE, this is in your packet, because it's not certainly visible here, but there is information there about the transition, which is what the DESE calls, calls it, over several years to all online testing. As you know, this year, it was just in grades four and, and eight. Ten has remained with the old MCAS this year and will again, excuse me, next year, but in this, there is that transition plan for the numbers. And again, I can't see this, but I have a copy of it somewhere. But you do have it in your packet.
In the grade standard? The grade unit?
Yeah.
Five and, five and seven.
All right, Jamie says five and seven are being added next year, and... I'm wasting time looking for it, but it is here. If anyone in the audience would like a copy of that, we can make that available on this.
So next year, it'll be grades four, five, seven and eight. Three and six will be the following year.
And I think it says there that the high school will remain.
High school remains. I can't keep track of the high school. I'm waiting for them to tell me when it is the new test.
I think it is planned so that the students will take it. If anyone in the audience would like a copy of that, we can make that available on this.
So next year it'll be grades four, five, seven and eight. Three and six will be the following year.
No.
And I think it says there that the high school will remain.
High school remains. I can't keep track of the high school. I'm waiting for them to tell me when it is the new test.
I think it is planned so that the students will take it when they've been through.
I think it's the eighth graders who took it online. So it's current, when they become sophomores.
Last year's eighth graders will be the first ones to take the M correct. Okay, that makes sense. But next year it says we're going to have to do a pilot of sophomores to test it.
And the reason for that, of course, is these are the kids that need to pass that 10th grade test in order to get a high school diploma.
So, but am I, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
But am I correct in reading that, that the grade 10 students will have to take pilot tests during the year and then also take the regular tests later in the year?
I didn't know how to interpret that.
That's my reading of it. So that's going to be a fun.
Well, I didn't say everything was a good thing.
Yeah. A fun year for those 10th graders.
A time that doesn't interfere with the.
It also says that it's a portion of students instead of the entire grade. How are those students going to be chosen?
They usually, they usually tell us how to choose them, or they've already been chosen for us. Right, so they'll say like, give me a section of English or.
I mean, 60 to 90 minutes extra of testing that these kids are going to be taking. Are parents going to have any say in whether their kids are participating?
We don't know. This is the only thing we have, and that's why I included it, because we haven't gotten any other guidance. Now, we have the summer institute coming up at Wednesday, Thursday and Friday of this week. And we have the interim commissioner coming. And he usually does an update of ongoing things. And we may find out more there because we will be able to question him if we aren't given that information. But at the moment, I seized this because it was the first thing in writing that we had seen.
Well, they, when, it was a couple of years ago that the kids had to take a pilot.
Yeah, but we weren't doing other, I think it was a pilot part.
It was, it was middle school kids.
But it was in, at a different time of year. This is actually talking about adding it onto the test.
Oh, geez.
It's an extra 60 to 90 minutes if these kids would be.
Oh, I was thinking it would be a different time of the year.
Sure, it would be a welcome bringing of.
Yeah, but they're going to choose either EOA or math, is how I read it.
All right, so more to come on that. We won't belabor this tonight.
Facilities update. Is you have in your packet also information about Doug's report for May and for June. That's mentioned twice. That's the reason I mentioned it here, but it is in your packet. There's a brief Meiko update there. It was in the form of an email from Andrew, who is our first year coordinator. He's done a terrific job, instituted a few new things. And in particular, I suggested that you, that you look at, that you look at the special projects that he's done. We are at our full quota. We were this year forty students for a number of years. We had been shortened down about three or four students in each year for a variety of reasons. Somebody moved in the middle of the year. Or in particular, it was hard for us to fill first grade positions. But Andrew is very aggressive, was very aggressive this year, about getting in early, even before we knew where we would have openings, to get some good folders. That's, that's always been a challenge for us to be able to look at available kids early enough to make sure that we get a good representative sample of them. So I think that's good news all around.
I, I was really excited to get the report. And I noted, he said that high school students have a Friday chat and chew luncheon.
Yep.
I would love as a school committee member to meet them and chat with them and hear their experience.
Having you or anyone come.
I think that would be great to have a different perspective.
And I would say too, that at the different buildings, and particularly at the middle school, we've had a number of volunteer mentor teachers to have a personal relationship with individual kids as they move along. So really a lot of great things that have happened.
Yeah, I learned a tremendous amount from the memo, so thank him for preparing us. Great.
I included the final transition report, a fairly brief one, that came from the middle school. We've included most of the transition reports that have come monthly from the, from the high school. This one happens to be from the middle school. But given that that program has only been in place since April, because we didn't have funding for it until then, I will tell you there were a total of 42 students just since April that have accessed that resource. And that's mostly all for physical kinds of injuries. And once again, the number of concussions is a great concern to me, honestly. Who would have known that there were that many? But the format of this report is exactly what has been used for several years at the high school because high school transition room has been in place for at least three years, maybe even more than that. And they have a complete set of records. And on a monthly basis, she always gives us graphs and charts so that you can visualize more easily the kinds of issues that exist there and how many children there are from month to month. And for the most part, these are all intended to be short term placements, if you will. And sometimes simply a place to go to be able to relax and turn off the lights for kids who aren't quite ready to resume the full level of program. In other cases, they're trying to make up time and assignments and so on for times that they've been hospitalized. And for others, their youngsters might need some help with homework. But the people who provide these resources are not classroom teachers. They're not therapists. They're not intended to be there. But they're intended to be a place for children to go and be doing something meaningful and be supported if they need it. Not necessarily for special ed or regular ed. They would be open to any children that fit that criteria of having had a recent illness tragedy in their life, particularly hospitalization and a need, some way to be in particular, other than sitting on the floor in the guidance office so they can recover from whatever it is that has concerned them. So that's been a success story. And here is the May and June report. That's also in your packet. There was in one of the DESE newsletters, actually it's an advisory on special education law, particularly with respect to the fairly recent Supreme Court decision about special education. And I'll read the part that is bolded. It says, "To me, it's substantive obligation under the IDEA. A school must offer an IP reasonably calculated to enable a child to make progress appropriate in the lights of the child's circumstances." And the key wording within that is that the IEP must be reasonably calculated to enable progress. There was much softer language in the prior version of the law, the part that was being challenged. And so this is a little bit stronger, not a lot, but a little bit stronger language in reasonably calculated to make progress appropriate in light of the child's circumstances. So that's just there as an FYI. We received actual copies of the decision, but they're dense and very legalistic in terms of language and not easy to read. And we've received legal opinions from attorneys from various firms that are helpful and kind of narrowing it down. I found this to be a concise way to understand it. We have a parent letter. It was missed on the first time in the packet. Two of you let me know that, and I think we put it in there. It's a packet complimentary of a child's experience at the middle school this year. It was very well written with a lot of detail that I think you would enjoy reading.
Great. And then other communications, any other?
I don't have others.
I don't have any. Okay. So brings us on to our next new business item, 6.2, to hear the annual CPAC report. And we have Katie Goggan with us today, who's co-chair of this CPAC board. So welcome.
I think Dr. Gallow is going to pull up our slides and promise it won't be too long.
Do you think we could turn that off just for this presentation?
I'll really make it fast.
There's a way to see people.
That's right. People turn red or fall asleep, I'll know my time is up. So the CPAC board just wanted to give a brief presentation related to our annual report. I also want to say if anybody didn't receive a copy of the annual report and would like one, it's been posted on Facebook, but you can also send an email to our Gmail account. And we're happy to distribute this as people would like.
Rick, oh, thank you. There's a toggle. That's good.
Yeah, on the white one where the lever is, just flick the bottom and then slide it up and then hit the big light off.
Oh.
Did I get it? No, I need to.
That's good.
That's good.
Right below the white, click the button. The other way, there you go.
Okay.
There should be a sheet of instructions.
Yeah, we should put something up there.
All right, so I just want to begin by introducing the current CPAC board for folks that don't know them. So I am Katie Goggan. I'm one of the co-chairs. Courtney Orwig is the other co-chair. Beth Coys is our treasurer. Jen Doane is our secretary. And then Tricia Burns couldn't be here tonight, but she is in charge of our public relations and outreach. I also wanted to take a minute here to thank Diane DeNapoli and Nate Rand and Paige Rand, who provided really strong leadership in what was a very challenging year last year in unanticipated ways. And so this report covers a lot of the work that Nate and Paige and Diane contributed to, as well as sort of looks forward to what the new CPAC board hopes to do. So thanks Diane for all your work. So I'm just going to briefly today touch on the role of CPAC for folks that don't know, go over some important MCAS data that really spoke to the results of the population of children that we focus on at CPAC. Talk a little bit about the activities and the accomplishments of last year, and then look forward to our future directions in the year ahead. So just very briefly, the role of CPAC is defined in the Massachusetts statutes. It has three sort of big areas that CPAC is charged with doing, which is advising the school committee on matters that pertain to the education and safety of students with disabilities, meeting regularly with school officials to participate in the planning, development and evaluation of special education programs. And then we need to conduct at least one annual rights and responsibilities workshop for parents. There's also lots of other stuff in the law about bylaws and things like that. But these are, this is the, the main role of CPAC. So I wanted to be able to frame our discussion today really by looking at the data. And we're all a part of CPAC, and all of the parents who have been so involved this year are part of CPAC because we want our children, our children with disabilities in particular, to achieve all they can. And so the, you know, the sort of bottom line for us is we want success for our kids too. And so this, this data becomes really important to parents of children with special needs. And this is all data taken from the MCAS presentation that was done in January. And so it's, it's not new data, and so I'll go through it quickly. But I wanted to be able to highlight for folks what so much of the strong feelings around this issue were over the last year. So, you know, when we look at English, this is the comparison of our benchmark towns. So both what Hingham defines as benchmark towns and the state DESE defines as our benchmark towns. And you can see here across the board for all students, Hingham is sort of second in that realm, but it's second from the bottom with students with disabilities. And in fact, less than half of our students with disabilities are achieving proficient or advanced levels in the MCAS when it comes to English language. Go ahead, Dawn. The same we see with math. We're kind of, you know, we're third overall. We fall to the bottom of the pile. And less than a third of our students with disabilities are achieving proficient and advanced levels on the MCAS math test. And then we see the same pattern in science where, you know, just above a quarter of our students are achieving proficient or advanced levels. And so, you know, we as a collective group of parents with children with special needs, it's really hard to see statistics like this and wonder, you know, what, what's going to happen with your child? Are they really, you know, succeeding at the level they can? And so I think these, these numbers for a lot of us really drove home the individual stories we had heard from some parents. And then, you know, you sort of think, well, that's against benchmark towns. Our benchmark towns are pretty successful. But when we looked at the trends across the last five years, you know, we saw for all grades, the trends are, you know, a little inconsistent, but pretty much going up. That's an upward trend. And, you know, if you look at the Y axis there, the scale is 65 to 90. And if you go to the next slide, we see a very different trajectory for our children with special needs. And certainly the Y axis scale is different there too. And so if you put those all on one, you would see really different pictures. And I think, you know, MCAS isn't everything. I think everybody would say we don't want our children measured purely by a test score, but it's an important marker. And I think this was, you know, sort of one of those flags in the sand that people really felt like, we've been hearing a lot from individual parents, but when you saw the collective data, it sent a really powerful message that Hingham could do better by kids with special needs. And I think that's a lot of what the work was about for last year and will continue to be, continue to be about going forward. So our accomplishments from last year. In the realm of advocacy, in November, we had a really well-attended parent forum, followed a week later by a parent, sort of parents forming really aggressive work groups. And we had a huge number of parents come out, more than we had had in the previous few years of CPAC meetings, and really shared their story. And that was, you know, it's, it's a little funny to put that in the advocacy bucket, but not until we really got that collective mass of people were we able to sort of move forward and say, okay, like, we need to make this change. And so that was a really important moment. I also want to acknowledge here that those November meetings would never have happened if Jamie Kenny hadn't invited a group of parents to her house to have a more informal conversation before and really connect parents in what was formerly a more isolating situation. And over time, that evolved to no more Ryans. And that was another important force that it's, we have to acknowledge last year that really pushed this forward. So under the guise of CPAC, I think those parent, that parent forum and workshops were important. But there was a lot happening outside of CPAC too, which was really critical last year. The other successful advocacy efforts we had were the release of the Walker Report, and we'll hear more about that in the agenda shortly. But it certainly was a big push to make that report public. And that, I think, felt important for parents in the sort of name of transparency. Like, we, we don't, we don't want anything in file cabinets anymore. We all want to be in it. We're all invested now. The same with the release of the settlement agreements for special education settlement agreements that were formally had, well, still have confidentiality rules on that, but there was basically a ruling that said that the public had access to redacted copies of those. And I think parents and the community really wants to understand the agreements that are being entered into between the school district and special education parents. And it was a lot of back and forth and appeals to public records to finally get those. And it took several months. And so I think that felt like another really important thing in our, in our movement and advocacy efforts towards transparency. Of course, the report is very detailed with all the events that led up to this. But CPAC was very pleased with the funding for the Special Education Continuous Improvement Task Force work at $25,000 last year. And then we're certainly excited to be part of the interdisciplinary Special Education Improvement Task Force that that work has begun. And we'll, you know, sort of start with the middle school evaluation. But I think those were really important milestones in a really challenging year last year. And I wanted to sort of frame this advocacy work with this focus on openness, accountability and honesty. and honesty, and I think it's, these are really hard issues to talk about, and folks are working hard on all sides. But I think we all have to know all the information to be able to come to the table together to make progress, and so a lot of the work last year was really about getting all the information on the table so that we could all move forward with the same baseline of knowledge. And so, you know, I acknowledge that was really difficult, and really difficult at a lot of moments, but I think it was important, and I think it will provide a good foundation to continue to move us forward. So, even in the midst of all of that, CPAC was able to do some community events and some parent engagement work. CPAC last year participated in the Fourth of July Parade, the monthly drop-in parent breakfast launch. There was also a series of parent education events that happened, including homework strategies by Dr. David Murphy, the Special Education Rights and Responsibilities Presentation, and then navigating the Office of Civil Rights Complaint Process. And again, I want to give credit to Diane De Napoli for organizing a lot of that, you're so good at that work. And so, that was also really important to have that sort of balance of events in the midst of all the advocacy work going on. So, future directions and looking where we're heading for the next year, we're going to continue with our advocacy efforts as part of CPAC. Of course, you all know that CPAC just launched, well, just concluded, closed, a survey of all parents, and so we're in the process of analyzing that data and hope to have a draft report by next August, this coming August. And so, our advocacy efforts this year will really be driven by those parent survey results. We want to make sure we're working on behalf of the parent voice. We're going to really make sure that all of our advocacy efforts are supported by research, and we really want to make sure that what we're implementing in special education and changes are evidence-based and research-based and supported in literature, so we see the outcomes for our children we want to. We'll continue to promote transparency in our interactions and make sure everybody has access to all the data. And then we really want to focus on accountability for short and long-term goals. CPAC has already started a collaborative work plan with the school committee and administration to really become very specific about the tasks before us and timelines and responsibilities. And so, we hope that will be a really useful document in ensuring accountability for all parties at the table, that we're all doing what we agreed to. Of course, we're going to continue the parent support and engagement work. In addition to continuing our monthly breakfasts, we're also hoping to establish an evening once-a-month social for working parents, and we saw some of that on the survey. We also heard a desire for parents to gather by their child's primary disability, and so we'll work on seeing how we can organize groups like that to continue to engage parents going forward. And then finally, we'll also continue the parent education work, specifically to help parents better understand their rights and advocate for their children. And then there's sort of a whole bunch of other knowledge people wanted to build, and a lot of this comes from early comments on the CPAC survey, and so we'll figure out how to address those issues the best we can. So, that's the CPAC Annual Report. Our Gmail address is there if folks have questions that they want to send to us directly, and I don't know if anybody, any of the other officers, or Diane, or anybody else wants, has any other comments for. All right.
Does anyone have questions, comments?
Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to thank Katie, Courtney, Beth, Jen for coming tonight, and Trish, of course, who's not here, but also thank Diane, who's here tonight, who served two years as chair of the CPAC and co-chair, and Nate and Paige too, you did a tremendous amount of work. It's an ongoing group, and so the continuity is important, and we are working very closely with the CPAC, and the survey results were very informative, and a lot of good news too in those survey results, so when we look forward to the report when everything is summarized. But we also have some work to do moving forward, but I think we're on a good track of going forward. So, on that note, we'll go to 6.3. The 6.3 on our agenda is to receive a report on the school department's response to the 2012 Walker Report, and hear changes and improvements in special education services and staffing that have resulted since 2012. So, this was a report that was initiated in 2012 by the Student Services Department in preparation for the DESE's comprehensive review of the department, which happened in 2013. We, and that report, that DESE comprehensive review had resulted in no findings against Hingham, so, but this, the Walker Evaluation Report was done in preparation for that, and the school department had made a commitment to keep working on the recommendations and do a look back five years later. So, we're at that point, and I believe there's a lengthy report that the school committee received. There you go. And tonight will be a summary because we did commit to making this a public presentation.
Jamie, there's some more on the table that Kate brought in.
But we have done a lot more work since 2012 on special ed, so this is intended to be a brief update since there's a lot more going on anyway.
And just to add to what Liza said, is that the school committee has in its packet the longer report, the full report, and after tonight, we will put that on our website, and we'll make it available to CPAC for your website. And in addition, you all have copies of the summary of that report, and with a very much smaller number of slides. In terms of, and I appreciate the suggestions that came from some of the people at the CPAC meeting last week, and also that came from members of the school committee, to try to narrow the report down so that it addresses more of what it is you want to know, as opposed to what I thought you might want to know, which was what the last report was about.
And we did have, just on June 27th, the special ed subcommittee of the school committee heard an initial review of this, and we had quite a large audience of special ed parents, and we flushed through a lot of issues that night, and so this is intended to be more of an overview, but then the full written report will be made available.
And I would say, and make really two comments. One is that some of the feedback that I got was important to identify dates when things occurred. Well, sometimes that's possible. When we appoint someone, when we formally adopt a program, there's a date that goes with that. But for much of the work like this that's over a period of time, we have discussions through the years, and so there isn't a year when something is adopted. And certainly, the budget feeds into that as well, because as with all of our programs, it's rare that we can introduce something and fund it and staff it all in one year. We have to be creative in terms of even things about funding something as basic as our reading program that takes multiple years, and then dividing up the purchase often into multiple parts and so on. So, that reflects the way things happen in education perhaps more so than the way that they happen in other realms of work. So, you will see in the full report that there are dates with a lot of the things, but many of them were over a period of time and were discussion-oriented, and then we did things about the discussion in a particular year or over a period of years. So, probably still isn't as a non-educator might want to see it, but it is our reality. And so, I will point out, Katie mentioned things in file cabinets. Well, this report wasn't ever in a file cabinet because it sat right behind my desk because it was an ongoing kind of work that we wanted to do. So, so just a brief summary of how this all happened. It was contracted for by Jim Loud, who was his predecessor as Director of Student Services. What really motivated it was an internal want to be better prepared for our DESE Coordinated Program Review that was coming along the next year, and also some administrative concerns, because when we sat down to contract with someone to do a review, we decided we had to kind of focus it on something, and so the particular concerns were about increasing requests for individual parent support for students. That was kind of an overriding concern, and we asked him to look particularly at that, and that's why there are three of the eight recommendations focused on that. And then other areas of special education we've talked about a bit, that, you know, he hoped he would comment on, were about the efficacy of programs and services and instructional practices, consistency in our use of parent educator resources, not just looking at individual parents, but all resources, identifying topics that we needed since he's going to be interviewing a large number of staff people, with staff training that they felt they needed or that we needed to assure. And then, all of this would develop a basis of information for future planning and decision-making, and we agreed that it would be a five-year journey. The first year, we were highly focused on doing our program review preparation. We did that, and the succeeding four years, we've worked on this over time. It was a relatively inexpensive review because it was intended to be of a small scope and give us some information that we could then share with the Department of Education. So, what's happened since then, when we got it back, we did share it with the Department of Ed as a piece of evidence. There are standards that we have to meet in those reviews, and we are expected to write evidence that we've taken steps, and this is one of the steps in terms of the self-assessment that we work in the process of doing. And then, of course, this response, so what's next? Well, we now have a successor plan, so to speak, which is a social-emotional, which has promoted some of these other things, the social-emotional task force that's chaired by Jamie and Brenna Rogers, the Special Education Working Group that came out, came not from this plan, but from the concerns that were expressed over the winter in particular. Jamie's Professional Development Committee and Plan, we've always had a professional development plan, but Jamie, and we've always done a staff survey about that. Jamie has a wider committee than we had before, so that's there. The Five Pillars Improvement Plan, which is really the successor plan to this, what has been accomplished here. The DESE Coordinated Program Review Assessment that is going to happen in the coming year, very ambitious thing that we have to do, '17, '18, and a CPR Visit Coordinated Program Review that visit in '18, '19. The particular methodology that was used for this study, just briefly go through it, review documents that came from us and program descriptive information from the school department, data and statistics that we got, a lot of it from the Hingham Public Schools, but a lot of it from comparative stuff from DESE, and teacher schedules and caseloads, all kinds of data was reviewed by the evaluator. There were small group and individual interviews, 67 of them in all, roughly 30 minutes, and they ranged from classroom teachers to life, general education, to academic support, classrooms and groups, and life skills classrooms, we had three of those at the time, counselors, principals, and so on. The review was Jim Schilling's Law, who was at the time a Walker associate, I'm not sure if he's still there or not, public school experience for 37 years as a teacher and administrator, special ed, and director of pupil personnel and so on, some college-level work as an adjunct professor, and also some honors in terms of professional organizations in which he was a member. So, what we have now is the five-year review and the update, which includes commendations and recommendations, actions that have been taken, and X steps. So, these are the commendations. There are 12 or 14 of them. You have access to them, I'm not going to read them all, you've seen them before, that I'm sure is, while it's nice for us to see, probably some of you'd like to see more about what was done in terms of the recommendations, and that's certainly fair. Changes in context and demographics, because our situation has changed. The resources we have have changed, the world we live in has changed, and certainly the student demographic in terms of numbers of students and percentages in special ed and all that kind of thing, that all has changed as well. So, this was formally two charts. I put all the information into one chart, so you can see except the one thing I didn't change at the last minute. So, this is now the January 12, January 2012 and 2017 snapshot, so you can see the two columns in each case. So, on the left, it's the number of students that we have in and out of district. The left column is for 2012, what existed then, and the right column is for 2017, so you can compare it more easily. You can see that the total number of IEPs, at least in that January in each case, was there, is down somewhat, and you can look up above to see exactly where it's down and where it's up. Certainly preschool up. At the same time, the number of preschool students outside of the district is down. So, there were eight that were outside and 25 in district, and now 40 in district and three out of district, and the elementary, middle school, and high school are all there. So, total 534 students with, and, in addition, there were 61 students out of district in 2012. And in the past January of 2017, 506 students with IEPs in-house, in district, and 51 out of district. If you look at the right, this is a chart that is just for in-district students, and what you can see there is there, at East School, if we look at in-district students, the total, that would include the preschool in-district students, pre-K through 5. At the other elementaries, it's K to 5, so there are 86 of those students. And at that time, 57 at Foster, 54 at Plymouth River, 44 at South. We did have the four elementary students at that, four elementary schools at that point, 160 at Middle, and 133 at the high school. And the high school includes a cohort of students that are between the ages of 18 and 22. In January 2017, and, you know, these enrollments can change from day to day, so this was January, so likes are being compared there. So, at East School, 75 students, and that included the pre-K. So, it was 40 and the 25 pre-K students, 40 K to 5. So, that is down, and in fact, our elementary enrollment has decreased over the last three or four years, so I would expect that those numbers would be down. And then, you can see that at Foster, you know, fewer students, at Plymouth River, the same number of students, at South, more students. And I would give two reasons for that. I'm not sure that the two reasons would convince anyone that there wasn't some other factor, but because the two reasons represent small numbers of kids. But South, we now have a cohort of students that is a class for kids with intensive needs, and we also at South have the largest elementary enrollment of the four schools. But it's still a difference of 21, which deserves some thought as to why that is. The middle school is down, and the high school is a little. The middle school is down, and the high school is a little bit up by one student. So you can see the in-district IEPs, five thirty-four versus the five oh-six now, saw that on the left-hand side of the page. So that's how that difference plays out. Last time you saw this, there were, was another slide in each category. So this is the two thousand twelve and two thousand seventeen slide. There are sixty and fifty-one students, respectively, out of district over those years. And you can see the data. So the pale pink color, which is the color that is on top, is for two thousand twelve, and the darker red color is for two thousand seventeen, and that's the bottom number in the bars where we have both categories. And so you can see that in terms of the biggest numbers, autism, both out of district and in district, is, well, the out-of-district number is slightly less, and the in-district number is slightly bigger for autism. And multiple disabilities, those are the biggest categories. But you can see, one particular area of concern that we all have talked about in recent years is the emotional, social-emotional category is for two thousand twelve, much shorter, no, it's the other way around, two thousand twelve, where the emotional category for out-of-district was bigger than in two thousand seventeen. And that's somewhat surprising, because of the prevalence of social-emotional concerns, although our social-emotional concerns have now kind of expanded, because remember, this is primary disability for children with disabilities. If we were to do a similar graph, looking at, if we had a firm count of these children, that in district, we have a very large number of concerns that aren't necessarily identified as disabilities, but rather concerns, and it's a big concern among not just the special ed population, but with respect to the general ed population as well. And then in district, again, these are disabilities, the population being children with special needs. And this is not a graph of what the emotional category looks like for the general population. And in fact, in the survey that Jamie's group surveys, plural, that Jamie's group will be doing in the fall, we may be able to get a better handle on that. We tried to do that last year, and having the adjustment counselors kind of categorize the kinds of students that they work with in the general population, to get a sense of the size, but it wasn't a formal study of everybody, it was just assessing their information about kids that they dealt with. So the recommendation, so I put the information about each of the eight recommendations here, and I think it will perhaps make it clearer what we did near where the concern was expressed. So there are three colors on each one of these slides. The black is kind of extra information that the evaluator added, but the red is the specific things that he recommended that we either study, or consider, or do. So in this recommendation, number one, we were to study the pattern, we were to consider reorganizing for the purpose of increasing number of special ed teachers across the district, and we'd give consideration also to phasing out paraeducators and restructuring the budget to increase the number of special education teachers. Now, this was, we read this over a number of times, because we were totally sure what the evaluator was saying here. So what we've approached is what we interpreted him to be saying. We weren't totally aware of exactly what ratio he was looking at. Was it the ratio of paraeducators to special education teachers? Was it the ratio of paraeducators to students? Wasn't really clear, so that was a hard one to tap. Even though he does give a clue that there's an inequity, we do know that there is a higher number, and continues to be a higher number of paraeducators in the district that serve special education students than the number of special ed teachers. So we understand that point, but when he talks about ratio, not entirely clear. So what are the things that we did with respect to that topic? The staffing patterns were reviewed over two years, and that means the staffing patterns for parents and paras and special ed teachers. Special education teachers and supporting specialist staff for special education were added to the budget, and some of those numbers are all summarized toward the A. However, the idea of phasing out of all paras, we simply reject it, because we believe that there are many children who need to have para-education support, individual support, not all, not even most, but many. We see that as not being responsible to the needs of all children. However, we do believe, and we've written a statement that is in IEPs, where paras are recommended and provided, that fading over time should be a goal for most students. And again, I'm not saying even all students, but most students. There are many students who will require para-support for their entire educational career. So it's a goal number one, that's kind of a soft word, it's for most students and not Number two was the equity, in other words, were the differences between buildings more than one would expect, given the size of the buildings and the number of special ed students. So we looked at para-allocations, and we assess them by building and by level of need. We have a way of determining whether a student with special needs has high needs, moderate needs, or low needs. And certainly, in a building and using paras and needing support, one needs more support the more high-needs students have relative to moderate or low needs. So we had to look at that, and not just the number of students in the building, but what level of needs would be there. We added both clerical and inclusion paras to each building. When we used to schedule, because of funding and because of mandates, we funded all recommended para-educators for individual support first. And given the number of para-hours and dollars we have in a given year, they were the first priority. But we also realized that we needed support for things other than one-to-one. So over the years, we have added to the number of para-hours. Each building, for example, gets about, I think it's twenty-five to thirty hours of clerical support. That's for someone who assists with IEP meetings, and with making the phone calls, and all of that kind of thing. And there are some that are needed for instruction, and for co-taught classes is one major category for that. We've created a needs analysis form, and this is getting to the topic of looking to be sure that we're all making, all buildings are making the decisions in the same way, not the same number, but in the same way as each other, and particularly that the elementary buildings are making the same judgments across the four schools. So we created a needs analysis form and guidelines for requesting new or additional hours. Sometimes parents want some full-time support, sometimes they want more hours. And so now, we can't just make a verbal contact, we need a form that tells why is this request being made. It allows us to record better what the need is, so in the subsequent year, we can budget more appropriately for the needs. And that's in the case of new hours, sometimes for a new student coming in, sometimes for a student where we need more support for that particular child, even though he isn't new to our district. Or additional hours for children that already have individual support. And we developed a common paragraph added to all IEPs, at least those that are recommending a one-to-one para. That better describes the role, so we have consistency of roles, that what is the role this para is supposed to provide for the student that needs to be there. And then the goal of fading over time, fading the level of support, but not eliminating support for children who really need that service. Those three things that we did or developed there, they were done with a task force in fifteen, sixteen. In the prior years, we had done this review and looking at the data in different ways and so on. Number three was additional special education teachers will help to improve the district's ability to develop a more comprehensive continuum of services. We definitely agree that, the more teachers, the better. So special education teachers and other specialists in student services staff were added to support the program and enhance the continuum of services, and those are all summarized on a later slide. And in the full report, the particular year where somebody was added, we annotated the report with that, so more of that information is included, because we didn't do it all in one year. Here, the recommendation is a task force, and what we're asked to do is develop a uniform model for the response to intervention process. That model had been used primarily for the literacy instruction in the elementary schools, and more, it has been used for a broader range of grades, initially started in just the primary grades. So number one, for a broader range of grades, and number two, expanded to some help in mathematics as well. The commendations in the report made several references to the success of our RTI program, the fact that we had been in that business, so to speak, for five to seven years before the Walker report was done. And so this, we got a lot of compliments, but the evaluator apparently believed there were differences among the schools, and that's what he was asking us to look at. So, in fact, the principals meet every year to look at the consistency of service delivery. And that is, to be sure that kids in the four buildings get comparable amounts of time spent on these interventions, and also that we're using similar, if not identical, interventions across the four schools. So we do that every year. So the frequency of service delivery is now standardized by grade, numbers of minutes per week, or per cycle, at that level is how they standardize it, and number of minutes, as moderated by, is by the staffing resources that we have available. In some buildings, we're able to use people who are not special ed teachers, there may be other teachers in the building, might be that the librarian helps out in this area, and in another building, because of the number of students, that isn't necessary. So that does continue to vary. We use common assessments, like DIBELS, to measure progress, and also give attention, of course, to classroom performance, and to define groupings. There are data meetings that occur regularly, I've sat in on a couple, and it's really amazing what they do, looking at the student data periodically, and based on that, the groupings can be refined to meet the, what's now, according to data, the new performance levels. Common software is available on all the buildings, it allows the staff to personalize for student needs even beyond the groups that exist. Lexia is the software. There is also other kinds of software that is available in the different buildings, also pertaining to reading, but for, particularly for the response to intervention, Lexia is the one that they find very useful. The one difference that we can't really do much about is that the tutor and para-support are greater in the two Title I elementary schools. Now, I could spend an hour going on about what Title I is, and the very strict guidelines around how you use the money, and who can access the resources, and so on, but we have two elementary schools that are Title I schools, and two elementary schools that are not Title I schools. So there's a very strict federal guideline about Title I, and about most of their other grants, in fact. It says, "Federal money can be used to supplement, but not supplant." In other words, you can't say, "Oh, we'll put Title I money in those schools, and we'll take away from those schools what was used, provided by the district." So you can supplement, but not supplant. Well, that's a great philosophy in terms of thinking about what Title I was intended to do, but from a practical and pragmatic perspective, it presents real difficulties for schools. For districts, where not all schools qualify for Title I, because what it means is that we then have two schools that get fewer dollars to be used for, we don't have enough to use it for teachers, but to use for tutors and for para-educators. And so we struggle to try to somehow provide adequate sources for all four schools to do the same kinds of things. And so that difference in resources is something that we just can't do much about changing. This was, recommendation was about the elementary level, but for a number of years, we've had conversations about somehow providing Title, not Title I, somehow providing RTI Response to Intervention, or TRI, which some programs say they're TRI, which is focused more on reading in particular. So we also, in some studies, some thoughtful consideration, but no action on adding a middle school TRI. And largely, that's a function of the way that scheduling occurs at the middle school level. So we tried to do some other things to provide support for all students, and come up on that in recommendation seven or eight, not much one. And this, number five, said, "District required specific reading guidelines for accessing and exiting specialized reading services." Our program has really been strengthened over time in terms of the ISIT process, and, which exists in every building, including the middle school and the high school. There's a team that convenes periodically, and they look at individual students. So ISIT process is very much an individual process. And they look at individualized students, and those students are students that come to them through classroom teacher recommendations, and the teacher who brings an issue of a particular student to the ISIT team will have made all kinds of attempts to improve the student learning, and to provide support for the student to meet. the student learning, and to provide support for the student to meet grade-level expectations and so on. And so the team discusses the data that comes to it, and the interventions that might be provided prior to a diagnosis that might result in IEP. So it might be that some students need, you know, more attention, some students might need to be reading at a different level in a grade-level kind of text, test. There are all kinds of interventions and suggestions for alternate ways to move kids to success that come with both our new literacy program and our mathematics program. When a child is recommended for an IEP, and that is, and a particular recommendation is for reading, or for math, or anything else, actually, but we're talking here about individual, specialized reading, then that becomes the entry point, if you will. Over the last number of years, we have more and more teachers that come to us, or that acquire after they're here, with training in specialized reading programs. And that's helpful, because even for those students who don't qualify for an IEP can benefit by teachers knowing more about different ways to instruct kids in learning, or different aspects of reading. We developed, in some cases, new indicators of effective progress, and they're mainly based upon quantitative things. But that is one of the tools that is used, in two ways, really, in our program. One way is it's one factor to be considered as we're looking at whether or not a child has achieved the desired benchmarks, grade-level kinds of benchmarks, and might be recommended to exit from a program. It's also a tool that we use as we're having meetings to determine whether or not a student needs an individualized education program. I think that, from a practical perspective, principals have told us, and I think many teachers would tell the same thing, is it's a lot easier to set up guidelines for entry into a program, and to actually try some things out through the ISIT process prior to that, than it is to be firm in terms of exit. We can look at test results, assessments that go along with the particular reading program that might be used, specialized reading program that might be used. But we also need to look at kids, and where they are, and what other factors that may be considered, and how their classroom performance fits into that. So it's not as easy to say, "This is the firm set of guidelines," and there are lots of programs, too, that vary a lot from one place to another. So, we use indicators of effective progress, we look at the program, we look at the data from the program, we look at kids' classroom performance, and it's not as easy to do that. So we're probably more successful at getting in than getting out. We are, students, we hope, will be successful enough to be able to exit in a timely fashion from that kind of a program. So here, we're supposed to look at the roles and responsibilities of the school adjustment counselors, and examine them to be sure that they're doing what they were put there to do, and we need a little background on that. One adjustment counselors were added in this district, which took probably, I don't know, four or five at least budget cycles when we first put adjustment counselors in place. They were added as a regular education resource. And essentially, they initially did a lot more responding and reacting than they did proactive teaching. And over time, they took on both proactive and reactive responsibilities. So they were certainly always there for that youngster who was struggling with a family situation, or something else that had happened in his or her life. So that always happened, but added to that was some teaching in the form of the formal curriculum, grade-level specific, response to, excuse me, Second Step and... Second Step and...
And Step to Respect.
And Step to Respect, thanks. And those are, you know, kind of social learning kinds of experiences, dealing with peers, you know, and dealing with anxieties, and making friends, and all kinds of tasks of just growing up, all kinds of assets of just growing up. Over the last five years in particular, at least since we've got back the adjustment counselors, they have worked to kind of triage their responsiveness, and have developed And we're doing tiers, three-tier approach for a lot of things these days. So what are the things that they're providing for all kids, that all kids need and can benefit for? And those would be the kinds of lessons that come out of Second Step and Step to Respect. What are we providing for a smaller number of kids that need something periodic, but need something beyond what's in the regular classroom? And then lastly, what are those things that we can provide to kids that have high needs, particularly in the areas of, today anyway, in the areas of anxiety and depression in the elementary school? It's the same kind of a tiered approach that Jamie is talking about in his task force, the Social and Emotional Task Force. And they put that three-tiered approach together into kind of a brochure, a three-fold little pamphlet that defines it. During the last, or since the report was written, transition rooms have been added. At the high school first, three or four years ago, at the middle school last year, toward the end of the year, both will continue. There's also a trifold brochure that talks about those programs. Same goals and guidelines for each one, just grade-appropriate. We also have the Social and Emotional Task Force in place now, and that is new, so this didn't happen as a result of this report, but it happened as a result of concerns that really have come into play in the last three or four years, is when all of the growth in these concerns has occurred, across the country and across Massachusetts as well. So we're hoping, as a result of that plan, to have a stronger plan, both in terms of interventions that we can provide, and we know that for some of those interventions, there may need to be additional resources, so we'll have to stay tuned for that, so that we can get some of those things into budgets where they're needed, and also around this set of tiered systems of support. But, there needs to be, in this particular category, there needs to be ongoing discussion, because it started about three years ago, to clarify access to the different tiers of instruction and expectations for school-based therapies. Because it certainly no secret to the adjustment counselors, or to any of us that work with them, that there's a tremendous amount of pressure on them to kind of add to the three tiers, in a way. So, and it is around that group of children that need one-to-one service in some way, whether it's outside the home, or in the home, or as a part of the school, but accessing, everyone has access to the Tier Three. Everyone who needs it needs to have access to Tier Two and to Tier One. But with respect to Tier One, the issue becomes, should individual therapies be provided in the school, and written into the IEP, or should individual therapies be an outside-of-school service? And people can look at it in two ways. Up until now, or starting a couple of years ago, we tried to say that, what should be written, or could be written into an IEP, well, our answer, and we still need to work on this, but our answer has been, if a child's primary disability is in the social-emotional area, then just as we would treat any other primary disability by providing specific services, then that's what we would do in the case of an IEP. And that's where the line has been kind of drawn, not everybody is there, and maybe that isn't where we ought to end up. But this is a topic where we've made a lot of, done a lot of work since 2011, '12, when the evaluator was here, and when we had only two adjustment counselors at the elementary school, two shared among four schools, and we had only two assistant principals at those levels. We have got, and we had only a half-time adjustment counselor at the middle school. We've added all those positions back, but not all in one year. But we did add them back from when they were lost, which was during the year that we had the override for the opening of East School. We had to reduce the amount of the override that we wanted, or we were requesting at the request of the town, and we had to reduce the amount, and therefore, we had to cut lots of things, and reducing the role of the adjustment counselors in that category. So we've made a lot of progress since then. But in terms of making a lot of progress, we now have a new kind of societal issue that has occurred, that requires a lot more in terms of services from someone, or some resource. So we tried to include in here the things that kind of are ongoing discussions, as opposed to things we think, "Well, we got that all settled, and could call it done." The numbered seven is about a continuous service options for the middle school. So we do think we have a variety of options that exist at the middle school, and of course, options is really intended to enhance inclusiveness of the learning environment, and to the notion of the least restrictive environment, in the least restrictive environment, excuse me, that typically would start with the regular education classroom. So we have a variety of things that exist there. Supported classes in Grade Seven and Eight, particularly in math. Co-taught or inclusion classes, individual classes at different grade-level subjects. Individual and small-group paras, pull-out instruction. Strategies for Learning classes, those are at Grade Seven and Eight. Skills-level classes that exist, and special education teachers that staff a number of these things. Also, not necessarily under the category of special ed services, we have a redesigned reading lab that occurred two years ago, we'll be entering third year of that, and the new transition room, and those are available for very specific needs. And both of those are exclusive of help that children are getting through IEPs. The programming that we do reflects student needs, and options may change as student needs vary. And they do. When I say student needs, not an individual student's need, but rather the particular cohorts of students coming in and going out. And as you can imagine, at the middle school, with the big population, it has lots of things changed from one year to the next. We also are anticipating more work on this, and I know what RFP is in the process of being planned for an external review for '17, '18, particularly for the middle school. So, there's a place where we think we have a lot in place, much of it has been added since the year of the evaluation, but obviously, more needs to be done, and we've heard a lot about that this year, and the special ed task force has determined that that's what we need to do in the coming years. So we'll look forward to seeing what will occur there, and a pretty big group of people determining what we want to ask about, and who will assess the results of the RFP for the study, and so on. The middle and high schools should reconsider the current placement of students in Level Four, which at the middle school used to always be called Standard Courses. So we say Level Four at the high school, we said Standard at the middle, pretty much we use Level Four for all now. So, in fact, it says reconsider the placement. Well, in fact, we do that every year, every year we reconsider, because in May, when students have selected their courses for the following year, and parents are obviously involved in that decision, we sit down in May, and Jamie, Prior Ellen, and I sit down with the two secondary principals, middle and high school, and every department director or resource teacher, one by one. And those folks are the people, the directors and resource teachers, who make the determination of what we need based upon the tally that comes out of the course selection process, and what we have for resources, and where we need, how many of each level of course we need, and so on. So we have reduced, since the time of the mass frameworks and benchmarks, which goes back to 2011, was what we've been working on most recently, goes back to that time, and the time when diplomas required success on MCAS. And so a lot more attention needed to be paid to which students were going to be able to meet that kind of a goal, if that was their goal, or their assessment of achievement level. And so we've tried as much as possible, only to offer Level Four or Standard Courses, where we think it's a reasonable expectation for the number of students that have enrolled. And that automatically reduces the number of classes. So we used to have, prior to this point where the diploma became an issue, we used to have Level Two, Three, Four courses in virtually every subject, social studies, science, all the subjects. And now, what we tend to do is to have multiple levels of students in social studies within one class. So, everybody's in the same class. And the differentiation comes by different assignments and testing and that kind of thing, instead of having a separate class. And that has worked well for us. Sometimes we can take particular courses, a course like Biology One, where virtually everybody has to take Biology One, because there's an MCAS in Biology One. So we try very much there, when we can, and it's most of the time, if not all, to get those children in Level Three and Level Four into the same class, and then try to differentiate for their needs by assignments and assessment. But, things vary annually. The courses where we need Level Four, in the determination of the faculty, and knowing where kids are, and where we have to get them, will often occur in math, and particularly in ninth and 10th grade math, and in the middle school math. We don't have levels in sixth grade, but in seventh and eighth grade, we do. So, the Level Four classes, they vary every year, but it's a smaller number overall, and from one year to the next, it may vary even according to the department. It's important to know that parent visions for their children vary. There are some parents who want us to provide classes that take a child from where he is in terms of achievement, and move him or her. There are other parents who want the child to be in the class where he or she is at least exposed to the curriculum, that would allow them to be more successful on the MCAS. And there are some parents who acknowledge that, you know, "I'm not sure that my child will ever be a candidate for graduation, but I want him to have a satisfying, frustrating experience, and I want him to be able to go to where his potential takes him." So, that varies from one parent to another, particularly those kids that are kind of on that borderline, it's a very... Particularly those kids that are kind of on that borderline, it's a very hard decision for parents to make. We try to recommend what we think the child can accomplish, but obviously, that has to be a parent decision, and lots of times, kids can accomplish way more than any of us, including parents, may expect. So we provide recommendations, but we also have a parent course recommendation process in writing, simply requesting that the parent wants the child to be in Course Eight rather than Course B, and we honor those. We may ask the parent to explain the rationale, we may ask the parent to talk to the teacher to get some firsthand assessment of where they think the child can go, but in the end, it's a parent decision. So what's changed in terms of staffing and programs? Both an outer district coordinator, former full-time staff position, and an assistant director of student services have been added, and that's certainly an addition of a number of hours, but all in one person, that is. 3.5 adjustment counselors in '09, '10, that went to six adjustment counselors full-time in each building. Do we need more? Maybe. That might be an outcome, for example, of the study at the middle school. It may be an outcome of the social-emotional, but that's a question. We went from six to seven psychologist chair people, which we think is enough, the seven being that we have a shared middle and high school position. So it's roughly one at the elementary, and 1.5 at the middle and the high school. We moved from 42 to 48 special education classroom teachers. Some of those came because we added a full-day kindergarten. And every full-day kindergarten has a teacher, but also a paraprofessional. Went from six to eight nurses, two nurses duly certified RNs, and also DESE certified at the middle and the high school. We went from, at one point, using only contracted ABA hours to a full-time staff role, and using contracted hours for certain kinds of functions. And we're continuing to do that. We anticipate that we need to add a second full-time person. But again, adding it because we can define the needs and not just as a general resource. We need to be more efficient about how we schedule things, so that we meet the needs that we have, but do it in a way that has well-defined tasks that the person will fulfill. We moved from having pre-K in high school and middle school sub-separate classes to having such programs of the full range. So during the time of this study, it's interim between '12 and '17, we've added K to Two sub-separate class, and that's at East, and we've added a grade Three to Five class, and that's at South, that class I mentioned earlier. And in terms of the numbers of people, I couldn't replicate this chart for 2012, mainly because I know what we have now, but I didn't have a similar kind of chart back then. So we have teaching staff. In these numbers that we have under 2,300B, which is mainly the staffing part of the budget, the biggest part of the budget. 2,300 is biggest part of the budget and regular budget. 2,300B is the biggest part, the second-biggest part of the budget, the special ed budget. And so you can see what's in the general staffing category. It's teachers, it's, and the numbers thereby are there, four and a half special ed teachers. We lost special ed teachers also in 2009, '10. We got those replaced back over time. And so you see now, we have seven middle school special educators, seven high school, and that's going to be six and a half in the coming year, because we have one person who's going to be split between the middle and the high school. Five speech-language people, two occupational therapists, 5.8 reading staff, one V-CBA, and two intensive skills class at East and South. And then if you look over on the other side, there are other functions of the budget where special ed and student services staff live. The director and assistant director in 2,100B. Clerical staff are here. Elementary psychologist chairs, four early childhood coordinator at East School, seven tenths person there, secondary psychologist, there were the three that I mentioned, and an ELL teacher. And then we also have contracted services, OT, MPD, speech and language, ABA, home services, and home tutors. The support staff on the left side are all the paraeducators, tutors that we have particularly in reading and the building clerical staff, and so forth. So that's what we are. And what's changed? A lot of things other than specific things in that report that have changed. I mentioned restoring the positions, the start of the full-day K, but both of those had implications for special ed. There's a new $350,000 fund for outer district and related transportation costs that are unanticipated and unbudgeted for. It's a huge amount of money, and it's way more than anyone else I know has set aside within their budget. And we have access to that budget strictly through school committee. We don't have to go to the town meeting, or to town hall, or anywhere else if we had unanticipated or unbudgeted things. The inclusion rooms, the expanded professional development, we've expanded that budget, and with Jamie's robust task force, we'll probably have to borrow from somewhere else to fund it, but that's okay, because a lot of good things are going on in professional development. We've strengthened our ISIT support teams, that's instructional support intervention teams at all levels. That's really important, too, you know, really streamlining the process for how we identify kids with reading and other needs, because certainly behavioral needs often go to that team. And we revised and reinstated the IEP survey that we'd done a number of years ago, but that we stopped to really be able to update it and put it into place again. And we've updated the indicators of effective progress that we had for a number of years, but that we've added too, because of things like a new reading program. And mentioning the IEP survey that we did, I explained this the last time around, it's quite an extensive survey, and because it's graphs, I didn't want to include pages and pages, so we included a page with three sample questions. So you can see how it's set up, and two parents that strongly agree with the various questions that all are related to the IEP process, they most recently experienced, strongly agree, disagree, and not confident about them. So that's it, in terms of the slides. So I just saw, and there's a couple of typos, and I will fix those. We also will put this on the website and give you electronic access, so you can put it on your website as well, should you choose to do that.
Great. Okay.
Thank you. Any questions from the committee, comments?
I just want to say, I mean, obviously, collectively, you know, between you, Jamie, you know, the special ed team, parents, putting a lot of work into this. So I commend everyone for their work. Having in place now the social-emotional task force and the special educational working group, I think supplants. I think we are moving in the right direction. We heard the parents, and I just wanted to say that, you know, let's continue moving forward in a positive manner, in a walk with everyone. I appreciate the presentation that CPAC leadership did tonight, and I think that's the tone that we want to move forward, and working together and trying to collectively come up with some solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? I think everyone should read the full report, because there's a tremendous amount of additional information in that. I agree with Carlos, I think we're going in the right direction. Are there any questions from the audience on this? No? Okay.
Actually, I have one.
Okay.
I just wanted to comment.
Cut your name, please.
Carrie. At last week's CPAC meeting, there's a gentleman, he's interning with Dr. Gallum and Dr. Blah-Blah-Blah, and he made a comment that struck a chord. He said that the Walker Report wasn't really all that comprehensive to begin with, and a lot of the parent anger and emotion surrounding it wasn't really about the Walker Report itself, but more that it was kind of a talisman. And he concluded stating that everyone should just stop talking about the Walker Report and move forward. It made me think, because I've heard, over the past few weeks, I've heard comments similar from members of the administration and from school committee. And it's true that the report's not all that in-depth compared to the evaluations done on the special education programs in other towns, because we didn't really commission a comprehensive evaluation. But the Walker Report does contain recommendations that could have modernized our special education department if they had been implemented thoughtfully. Instead, the administration really chose to disregard a lot of them. It's also correct that the Walker Report has become a symbol. It's a symbol of the administration being reactive rather than proactive, and waiting until parents organized and got loud before taking any action to improve our antiquated special education system. It's a system of the school department avoiding parent input. I've looked at many program evaluations similar to Hingham's, including some performed by Walker Associates, and this is the only one that didn't include any parent interviews. Those of us with students who receive special education services are all too familiar with the administration's dismissive attitude towards parent input. For anyone who's unfamiliar with what we as parents went through, just to see this report, which is a public document, we made several public requests to see it, all refused by the superintendent. We eventually took our request to social media, which was effective, but it should not have been that difficult. Consequently, the Walker Report is a symbol of the way we as parents have had to constantly struggle, just to get the district to do the right things, the things that they're legally obligated to do. While I agree that we should focus on improvement and moving forward, I disagree with the premise that we should stop talking about the Walker Report, because it symbolizes issues that are still alive and well. We still have most of the same people in place, and the culture is also in place. I'm grateful for the administration's efforts, five years after the initial report, to start improving special education in Hingham, and that they're starting to include parents in those efforts. But this conversation needs to continue. I'm concerned with the lack of urgency surrounding special education improvement, and fear that the school committee and administration does not see it as a high enough priority. Students have been harmed by the administration's decision not to take an honest look at our special education programs back in 2012, and these students don't have an extra five years to make up for a lost time in education. School committee, this happened on your watch. The parents who elected you are asking you to step up and make sure that the administration properly educates our children. Until we see some significant improvements in special education and an improved culture in all of our schools, parents are not going to stop talking about the Walker Report, and nor should we. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, but Carrie, six of us weren't here in 2012, so your comment about this happened on your watch, that's a little far-reaching, but we take it that a school committee can pay attention to these things, and I think we've shown to you that we are, and I appreciate your comments, and we're all moving forward, and that's our mantra. And special education is very high on our priorities, and that's all I can say, and I think. I know I personally have taken on the chairmanship of the special ed subcommittee for that reason. So you have my own personal commitment, others can speak themselves, but that's my response to what you've just said. If anyone else would like to say anything.
I would agree. I mean, I'm new to the school committee as well, but it's certainly one of my top priorities as well, and I believe Liza is really invested in fixing the things that have gone wrong. And I think part of Ted's comments were, I can understand what you were feeling about that. My thoughts at that meeting, and I said it out loud, was that I think it's not something to stop talking about, but what we want to do is keep moving ahead, right? Because unfortunately, we can't go back and fix what was wrong five years ago, but we can endeavor as a group to make sure that it doesn't happen again, and that we collectively as a group, with the administration and with the parents, make sure that we make the corrective actions that need to be done.
Do you have any thoughts on how you do that with the same, it's basically the same culture in place, though? And that's my concern with that.
Well, I can just say, you can see the report in that we have had a number of turnover of senior leadership, and I'm not just talking about the people that are sitting here, which there has been change, but the, all of the new assistant principals hired all have special ed specific background, and you haven't even met those people yet. And so I think there's more to it than, and these things take time, too. So we are on it, and there, you know, there is change that's happening, and everyone is taking action within, and even with the same people, with doing different types of work, things are changing and things are happening. So it's hard to get into the details of it, but I think you heard tonight, the new assistant principal at the high school was a special ed teacher, the new assistant principal at Plymouth River was a special ed teacher. So, you know, those people will also be working with everyone in the district and adding their expertise collectively to the effort. And there are tremendously more parents involved in the effort as well. So there are many more eyes, ears, voices, hands-on, devoted to it.
And I think, I'm not on the special ed subcommittee, and so I haven't been as involved as some of the people that particularly are on that subcommittee, but even I have seen that this year, there's been more conversation, at least I feel like, as compared to the year before. I've only been on the school committee for two years, so again, I still don't have a huge amount of background with this particular issue, but I know there's been a lot more conversation this year than just one year before that. And I think that a lot of that frankly has been, you know, Liza really did jump in, she wasn't even on the special ed subcommittee, but she recognized as the chair that this was a huge issue that was coming to the forefront this year, and jumped in and tried to really tackle it. And I think that that's just another example of how the school committee has really tried very hard this year to try to work with the special ed, the CPAC group and the special ed parents, to try to really start making a change. I would just add on to that, I'm just, we are open to suggestions and conversations and true, honest feedback, I think both ways, right? It has to go both ways. Not to contradict what Liza was saying, but, you know, cultural change does take time, but I know kids don't have time, right? They have 12 years in the school system, and that's all they have. So we have, I mean, time is of the essence, right? The things that need to be fixed do need to be fixed now, and I think we're all cognizant of that, and our goal is to make real changes in the next 12 to 24 months, because we can't let kids flounder. And some kids are, some kids are doing, some kids are doing well, right? Your survey report came out, and I was heartened by some of the results on it, but, you know, as I mentioned, you know, I said some of the stories were heartwarming and some were heartbreaking, and it's great to have heartwarming stories, but we need to fix the heartbreaking stories, and make sure that we have more heartwarming than we have heartbreaking.
Thank you. So on to the next, 6.4, switching gears. To review and act on recommended changes to the building use and transportation fee schedules as proposed by John Ferris and recommended by the policy subcommittee.
I don't want to make a line to have it to drift. Maybe we should put that on, put a little sign over that.
Yeah. One, two. John, do you want to go through and outline these, or would you rather?
Whatever you'd like.
Happy to handle it.
You've had the meeting, okay. So the, we talked about these back in June, the June meeting, we initially brought the subject in, you know, proposing the, an increase in fees for a variety of facilities, not the whole schedule going across the board, but in your sheets, I think your sheets don't have shaded regions, but they should, I think everything has a note beside it. I was looking at my shaded one, but the ones where the notes are, is where we're proposing increases, okay? So we're looking at the auditorium and breaking out the middle school auditorium, because that's a class, I mean, that's a brand-new auditorium, it's the biggest one we have, it's a high-tech, it's got a lot of, it's a beautiful facility, and really it warrants a higher rental value than the high school auditorium. So we broke that out in the category, and then generally increased the rate for auditoriums as well. On the sheets that you have in your packet, the small set here is what the current rates are, okay? The small set. So should you want to see a comparison? I mean, I could go line by line, or I could give you generally, and you could see the comparisons. I think we talked about a lot of these rates back on the 19th of June when we spoke about it. And then the committee went back, and we did a little investigation, some more investigation on the rental of the wellness center, and also what we've done here is we've actually proposed a higher mileage increase for the category three for buses, to get more in line where, you know, what the competitive rates are. The, the other thing, so in the, the middle school, we broke out the gymnasium, too. Before, we had the middle school lumped in with the elementary, and now we have that facility, so we're breaking that out and putting a separate rate there. We're also putting a separate rate for the middle school baseball field. Where we, I just want to make sure everybody's...
You guys good?
Good?
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're, I sort of skipped around, I talked generally, then I was going back to the top.
No, sorry, my fault.
Okay. So I'm sort of on the first page here, and the Class A facilities with, you know, A2 and 3, A3, where we're talking baseball fields. The middle school baseball field is now included in that category three rate, so we can add that to the AAU fields. On the next page, tennis courts, what we've found with tennis courts is that tennis courts are frequently being used for lessons. So the, we thought that it was appropriate, since it would be having a commercial use, that it's appropriate to increase the rate for the tennis court. So those A3 category for tennis courts have gone up. We did speak last time about the wellness center. The wellness center, we need to do more research on that if we're going to rent that out to potential trainers. I think there's a lot more liability issues there. We know for sure, you know, for one example, but we want to make sure we get all the liability covered, that they'd have insurance to cover themselves, and that we have ironclad coverage should someone get injured on our equipment, okay? So there's some bigger issues. Then also, I mean, if you were to put somebody in there, they'd probably need a check-in by a custodian, looking at all the equipment, saying, yeah, this is all good. There'd be a checkout by a custodian as well, making sure all the equipment is good, and then we'd have to make sure it's clean. So there would be custodian charges on top of that, you know, of about an hour and a half. So whatever, you know, if it were that $20 an hour, we have these other overhead costs that we'd have to add. So I think there's no rate there now, I don't think we should make it available at this vote or at this minute, you know, I think we just need to do a little bit more investigation and, on that issue. Moving down to the bus trip charges, this is the sports event charges, and, you know, we're looking at, look at my glasses here, this is even smaller for me, the E2, 3, we increased the bus charges, some of the mileage charges. The school bus charges, we created a schedule for the school bus charges, and that's on the third page. That's for categories, categories one and two.
Is that the place where we made the change since we showed this committee last time?
No, but there is a spot where we have...
Yes, it's in there.
Okay. I just want to be clear.
Right, I mean, we're just making it clear that those, one and two are scheduled based on the schedule down below, and if they don't have a schedule, then it'd be based on the time and mileage, okay? And in category three, which is companies, individuals, AAUs, profits, camps, stuff like that, those are all time and mileage charges. And then below, we show what the time and mileage charges are. In the hourly charges, we see bus mileage. We increased those rates from what they were before, so one says a dollar, two says a dollar fifty, but three is $4 per mile. And that's, that's, you know, that's a good rate, I mean, because our contract for sports events is like $6 an hour right now, $6.50, you know, by first student, so it's still a very good rate, even for that sort of commercial category three category.
And that's still for an outside group that wants to...
Yep, an outside group. Or an individual that wants to get shuttled, you know, shuttle some people here, we don't allow drinking, right? But, I mean, if they wanted to, you know, a wedding, and they need a bus taking people someplace, you know, without alcohol, of course, right? Or, you know, they could drink in their place, but we could transport them later. You know, so, I mean, these are just the types of things that happen, you know? That would be $4, you know, per, for the mileage charge, but then they're going to pay the hourly rate for the bus drivers as well.
Okay.
Okay? So then, then we go down below, and we look at the personnel charges, and across the board here, we're recommending increases because we know our collective bargaining agreements are up for renewal, and we will in fact reach some agreements, although they're not settled yet. So we have increasing by 5%, which would reflect an administrative charge as well for going through the effort of setting all this stuff up on the hourly rate. We're custody cafeteria personnel have been increased, and that's a minimum of three hours, you know, should they be used. We won't, we can't bring somebody in for an hour, two hours. Contractual obligations require three hours for bus drivers and three hours for cafeteria, and for the custodians, it's in the contract for four hours for their events. The, when you look at the, so custodians, we've gone up, and then on the bus drivers, we also have increased the rate. Before, we had sort of similar rates, and we didn't break out that commercial category three as much. So now what we've done is, whether it's overtime or regular time, category three is $40 per hour, but in our categories one and two, they're reduced based on whether it's regular time or whether it's overtime. And then we talked a lot about the light tech, okay? Last time we met, there was a question of, like, the high school had got a new light panel, so should the high school be, you know, the, sort of the higher rate because the equipment's more technical? While the lighting is better with the new panel, it still isn't up to the level of the middle school. So we didn't think that it was necessary to increase the high school light charge to the level of the middle school, but we still increased that light charge so that we could cover the cost of the personnel that would operate these. So that's, I think that highlights all the changes. I know policy committee looked at it, we had some discussions. I think everything is within a market, you know, well within market, below market, a big competitive rate. And not so much that we're looking to promote this to commercial things, but for our residents or for the individual, for the people in our Hingham community that need these types of services or need to use some school facilities. I think it all represents a good rate and a good value for the general community in this area.
Well, and that balance with, you know, if somebody is going to use it for a commercial reason, we want to make sure we charge enough to make up for any wear and tear that's, you know, adding to our costs long-term.
Right, it should defray some of, you know, for the taxpayers, because the taxpayers pay for all this, so it would contribute to, you know, you know, this, I want to be clear, this doesn't generate hundreds of thousands of dollars, but, you know, it is, the school committee's obligated to sort of rent facilities by law, they're, you know, entitled to do that. And then when we do that, we should be giving, we should be charging fair rates, the values for our taxpayers, and then also get a return so that the taxpayer isn't paying for someone else to make money, okay? So, you know, I think that on this commercial rate, I think that we're paying for our wear and tear, and some of that is going to defray some of the taxpayer costs, right? On the, on the community-based organizations and the school-related ones, you know, the charge is a little bit less, so, because community-based, it's all our community people, we're already paying, but still, they're using resources, so I think the community-based sort of sits more along the resource use aspect, you know, and not so much more overhead that comes to benefit the taxpayer, because it's all our taxpayers using it anyhow.
And we're only increasing charges to outside organizations at this point?
No, there are some, there are some increases...
You.
Yeah. I mean, so the bus, the bus scheduled increases, you know, the bus schedules, they represent some increases.
Okay, so there's a new buses.
But, yeah, Patrick did comps on that to determine how much other, you know, different bus companies would charge to get in there. And, you know, when you look at them, they still are very, very good rates to, you know, transport kids.
And personnel to reflect any...
Yeah, personnel, yeah. Oh, okay. Yes, that makes sense.
And, sorry, I think, John, we're going to have a light sound tech for the high school as well, right?
If it was light sound tech, it's there, it's in the personnel charges, it's the first, when you look down below, there's two different...
But it just says middle school.
Yeah, one says the middle school on the very bottom, but the one above that is representative of the high school, because, or of the light tech, right? So we got the high school auditorium, we may also have a sound in light tech that operates the press box, you know?
Why would you, why the difference in the price between the high school and the middle school?
Because the middle school board is far more high-tech.
So is the high school, it's now.
But it's still not as complicated a parent, we checked that specifically. Like, the high school board is still not as complicated and technical to run as the middle school board, believe it or not.
And also that John made a comment that it's really difficult for us to get people to...
Yes.
At the middle school, and it doesn't seem to be a problem at the high school. Right, because, yeah, because one of the students... Hopefully it was a little bit more incentive.
And I haven't, I haven't seen a show at the middle school, but I get, I think with that theater, that theater is, you may have a technical board, but I think you have more light or more options or stuff at the middle school, and I, but even though we've upgraded the light in the high school, I can't imagine we could upgrade it enough to get to where we are at the middle school, or maybe you know.
Change the board, but the production equipment that the board supports isn't new.
For example, the middle...
At the high school?
We didn't change the number of lights and all this stuff, we just changed how...
And where they're placed and all that.
There's a whole new lighting system there.
But to the level of the middle school?
I mean, I don't know if it's how it compares to the middle school, but they got new lights on the stage...
Right, they did upgrade lights.
As well as a new board.
Well, one example, our understanding was, for the middle school, it actually has pre-programmable, pre-programmable settings that are in place for the school's use. So if somebody came in and started fiddling with it, it could throw off everything that's, it has the capacity for multiple levels of usage, whereas if there isn't, at the high school, it's not pre-programmed and set for school-specific things that could then be filed up by somebody coming in and using the board and shutting that off in the process of using it for their, for their own production. That was one of the differences that came up in our conversation.
I thought that they, I thought they could pre-program the ones at the high school.
Maybe they can, but the kids probably know and understand, I think the kids that are working the boards there...
Right.
Understand what they're doing. And the problem at the middle school is, we can't, for some reason, we just don't seem to be able to translate and get the high school kids to come over and work at the middle school, so...
Yeah, in the middle school, that, it was created that way, where, you know, we had the programs and everybody got trained that way, and that's, that's one of the first problems we had happen was, you know, someone brought their own light tech in, and they fiddled with the instruments, and then we lost the program that we actually had there. So then, that's more resource now getting, you know, a teacher or whoever knows how to program it to get it back to where it needed to be for the, for the middle school drama, so, you know, it certainly, when, it upsets the, it causes sometimes more work. So that's where I think the high school doesn't necessarily cause more work. Maybe it could be programmed, I might, from what I, when I talked to Barbara, I says, have we had any problems, or has the lighting made more technical? And she didn't have any word of that whatsoever, but Barbara Pia is the one that does all the rentals for me. So she's, she does the rentals in the facilities, and then, but she has also been the one telling me about how the situation is at the middle school. So even though we did upgrade the lighting, I think that in its, in its operational format, it's simpler than it is than the middle school.
So Michelle and Rick, take note, we can readdress this. If we need to increase the fee at a later date to have a better technician, we can come back to it...
Okay.
Once the first musical happens and we know what we need to do.
Chicago this year, by the way.
Certainly not a...
Making a plug.
Yeah.
Certainly not a diss on the high school system.
No, 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 it's, but, we're, yeah, we're not trying to, you know, dis...
Well, it's newer.
Not give them the best service.
Yeah, middle school is newer, you know, it's, it's a great system, high school is great, it's a great auditorium, it's got a great system, middle school is brand-new, you know?
Yes.
2013, you know, and not retrofitted, built, built for...
And just for the general public, it's a phenomenal job opportunity here for high schoolers and/or anyone else who would like to work at the middle school.
Would like to get trained and then can become a light technician.
A reliable...
Yeah.
Light technician that will show up for events.
Right.
On Saturday, on weekends.
And say yes, I'll work at events, I'll be happy to work at events.
It's a fun job, too.
Okay. So...
Okay, so, Sam, have any more questions? We need a motion.
Yes, we need a motion.
I will make a motion that we approve the proposed rates for FY 2018 as outlined on the schedule given to us this evening. Second?
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. 6.5, we have a couple of policy items. First, to receive proposed revisions to policy 6.24 as recommended by the policy subcommittee is the first reading, and Cynthia Galco is chair of our policy subcommittee, she will explain.
Okay, so, as a little background on this, May 29th, we received a request through Dr. Gallo from a teacher to look into changing this policy regarding the issuance of diplomas. Teacher's also a parent of a 2017 graduate, unfortunately, the timing of the request was such that we couldn't get this discussed before 2017 graduation actually occurred. So we did address this at our June 9th policy subcommittee meeting, and talked about the background on the issue. The current policy states, as you can see up there, it's not shaking too much, that diplomas will be issued by the chair of the school committee, a current or former member of the school committee may present a diploma to a relative or a student who has lived with the family. So, long story short, the last time this policy was changed was in 1995, and prior to that date, there had been a, I guess, a, you know, what's the word I'm looking for? Not a policy.
Practice.
A practice, thank you, of various town officials, you know, out-of-town guests, et cetera, being invited to present their diploma, their relative or special child's diploma to them, and it ended up... child's diploma to them, and it ended up sort of growing to the point that it got, became disruptive to the graduation ceremony. So, in nineteen ninety five, the school committee changed the policy to restrict that so that, as I said, only current or former school committee members could hand the diploma to a relative or, or a student who's lived with the family, i.e. an exchange student or visiting foreign student, et cetera. We discussed this issue and actually came to the decision that we needed to narrow this even further, because the current policy seemed to have some room for interpretation that we felt could be confusing down the line, so we narrowed it even further, and as we are suggesting it, it would read, diplomas will be issued by the chair of the school committee, a current or former member of the school committee may present a diploma to his or her own child. So, I'm going to make a motion that we accept that revised policy.
Well, it's a first, a first reading, so it's just discussion.
Oh, right, 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 okay. We're just talking about it.
Yeah.
Great.
Michelle? I have a couple of questions. So, are we using issued and present as, in the same?
Issued is like the official, you're getting this diploma.
So, so.
As in the authority. Right, this diploma is actually signed by the chair of the school committee, the principal, and the superintendent.
All right, but so this policy is saying that the chair of the school committee will present?
It says issued, and maybe it should actually say diplomas will be issued and presented by.
Well, but they're two different things.
No, no, no.
Yeah, they're two different things.
Issued.
Right, so that's, yep.
Issued is the authority, and, and in our discussions, we asked a lot of people about this, you know, Mass General Law states that every town containing a certain number of families, yada, yada, shall have a high school, you know, so the interpretation behind this, I believe, is that the school committee is representative of the town, and the town, you know, issues the diploma.
Yes, so, that's what I'm just, so, which I.
The, the original policy and the original problem that prompted the ninety-five policy were definitely about the physical presentation at graduation.
Okay, right, so that's what, so the way this reads now, I think the way it reads is that it's open as to who can actually present them, other than school committee members may present.
And that's why I'm saying, that's not what we want. We want the chair of the school committee to present diplomas, except for if a school committee member or former member has their own and only their own child graduating, that would be the only exception to the chair being the one presenting, so it could only ever be the chair.
But I think Michelle's point really is about the heading for this policy, it says issuance.
No, well, that's, her confusion is that it doesn't say any, this does not say who presents diplomas.
Right.
It doesn't say it, we're not saying it, so we still haven't solved the problem, is what Michelle was saying. This makes it sound like anybody can present a diploma, because it doesn't limit it at all.
Correct, yes.
Right. That's her dilemma, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's why I'm saying, maybe it needs to read diplomas will be issued and presented by the chair.
Right.
And maybe we need to retitle it, issue it and presentation, but the issue she's raising is not solved by the wording that we have here.
Okay.
My second point that I would make is, for discussion, is that, does the chair of the, should the school, does the chair of the school committee have to be the person to present the diplomas? I don't think by law they don't have to be, so I think, I would like to consider that we have the presentation of the diplomas be either the principal of the high school or their designee, and you can include the language that, and school committee members may, can be invited to present a diploma to his or her own student.
I think the reason that we, we kept it as a presentation is because, going back to the theory that it's the town of Hingham, not Hingham High School issuing the diploma, and the principal is not the, is not a representative of the town of Hingham, the principal's the principal of the high school, so since it's the town issuing the diploma, it should be the town designee, i.e. the school committee chair, presenting the diploma.
Right, which, if that, as the school committee, that's what we want to make the policy, that's obviously our purview, but I don't think we're required, I know we're not required to do it, right? So that would just, so I'm just saying, as a school committee member, I would like to see it be, I would like to see the school committee be the, this chair issuing the diplomas, but the high school principal or his, or her designee presenting them at the high school graduation.
Well, the principal does sign the diploma as well.
Well, and that's, yeah, that's, the principal is part of the ceremony.
And makes the statement that I affirm to members of the school committee.
Because if, if we take the school committee chair out of that role, then the school committee, theoretically, if no one on the school committee had someone graduating that year, the school committee would have no role whatsoever at graduation, and I think that that would be a shame to have no school committee member have an official role at graduation. Liza could still, the chair could still give a speech, I suppose, but.
You would still have a formal role, because you, the school committee was the one who issued the diplomas, along with the superintendent and the high school principal, so you do still have a formal role, it's just not being the person presenting, I, I guess, I'll just be blunt, I, I think that, I feel badly that a staff member at the high school who gives of their time, just as we all do, doesn't have the same opportunity that we do, to present a diploma to their own child, and I feel like, from a connection standpoint, when the students are graduating, that, you know, they, they've seen the principal every day for four years and whatnot, and have, you know, and sometimes the school, like, who's this lady's, you know, like, they don't have a connection with the people, and I, and I think that, and it doesn't necessarily have to be the principal of the high school, they could designate people too, I mean, other schools, I've kind of checked around, other schools, there's a variety of people who present them at, you know, some, some towns make it a community event, some towns have the citizen of the year presents the diploma, some people have like a retiring town official gets to do it, some schools have the student, the class officers present the diplomas to their fellow graduates, so that's just my thought, that it feels like it's that last connection to the high school experience in your Hingham Public School, and that the person who hands you the diploma should be the principal who's.
And in response to that, I, well, I hear what you're saying, if we were even inclined to go the route of having it be the principal instead of the school committee chair, and obviously that would have to be voted on by all of us. I would not want it to be the principal and/or the principal's designee, because then, what we're trying to do is, there's been so much rhetoric within the town of Hingham about, why does somebody get to give somebody a diploma? We're trying to make it more restrictive, so now if we say the principal or their designee, we're still leaving, now we're going to hear, well, why did the principal let that teacher do it? Why should a teacher get to do it and the selectman doesn't get to do it? I'm just saying, and then, it just, it leaves that issue open that we're trying to resolve, so if it was going to be the principal, I think it needs to either be the school committee chair or the principal.
Okay.
Nobody else but the principal.
Right.
That would be my feeling on that, on that.
I can see that.
All right.
And just to your point, I think, in terms of like many cities where the mayor is actually the chairperson of the school committee.
Yeah.
The mayor is there actually presenting the diploma, but not as a mayor, as actually the chairman of the school committee.
Right.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
I, I never looked into it, so I couldn't tell you why they established like that, but perhaps to your knowledge, is, is to show that the school committee has a say, you know, that's.
I mean, and I do understand your point about the principal's the person the students know, I, I get that part, but I think it needs to be one person.
Yeah.
Except for this one very minor exception, and that's why we narrowed it down even further.
Yes, no, which I can definitely understand the policy, because I could see that that could get a little hectic if there's, you know, twenty-five people out there handing out a fifty diploma.
Yeah, right.
No, is that, I'm trying to remember here, so, the chair of the school committee handled the diploma, but the principal is right there shaking hands, the first one, right?
Yes, yeah.
And the, the principal is the master of ceremonies of the graduation as well.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
That was not just him.
I kind of feel like we're, this is the tradition in Hingham, and the issue was raised not over the, who will, the initial granting, the general granting of the diplomas, but of the exception.
Mm-hmm.
And so, and I can understand that the exceptions have expanded or contracted in years past, and so, to me, there's not a big reason to break the tradition, and it is, having done it myself, I think there is something to, this is public education, and the town is responsible for providing the public education that the students receive, and so that there is a role for representative of the town in this monumental day of getting a high school diploma is a real accomplishment and part of your life record.
Right.
And so, to me, I see the role of the town. Now, where we make the exceptions, you know, I, I hear you on, you know, a teacher asks about their own child, okay, I, I hear it, but then, we've gone through in the past, and not to recent past, of so many different people then asking for the exception, and it, right now, we have a pretty tight, concise ceremony, and so, and Rick may decide to change the ceremony next year, it's, it's purview as principal, but I, I think on this, my thoughts are, it's kind of, that's our tradition in Hingham, and.
And, sorry, I was, I did not realize that, how long, because I thought that, that had been, say, changed relatively recently, that the principal had handed out the diplomas until sort of the last few years?
Well, when Paula came, we changed, we varied things a bit.
Okay.
And yes, she did hand out prior to that. In fact, going back to this time in nineteen ninety-five, Paula was not here.
Right.
Then, recently, so, in our, in our span of recency, that is a recent change, but not in most people's experience.
I guess, but whatever, but to the earlier point, whatever we decide, I think we have to clarify that it's issue and present, not just.
Prior to that, prior to ninety-five, another, when Paula came, there were some other changes, she felt, she came from an environment where students were, it was their ceremony and very much a part of it, so she's added student speakers, and prior to that, we had, you know, other people doing the speaking, could be the, the, a member of the school committee doing a lengthier speech than an introduction to the presentation and the issuance, but she very much focused on a bigger role for students and smaller roles, whether shorter speeches or whatever for the adults.
Well, and if there's some leeway in how, in the actual ceremony itself, maybe there's a way to have a role for teachers who are also parents of a graduate participate in some other way in the graduation, not just handing out the diplomas, which might be nice to have them involved.
Get a ribbon like the, the ribbon.
Yeah, exactly.
In nineteen eighty-nine, as well as in nineteen ninety-three, attended both, and they both, major speaker was the chairperson of the school committee, eighty-nine and ninety-three.
Well, I wouldn't have a problem if the teacher stood next to the superintendent.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
I mean, something like that, but.
I think if we're going to, if we're going to make, the teacher, though, we need to make it any Hingham Public School.
I think inviting the teachers to, you know, wear their robes and sit in the audience with the speakers and the guests.
Yeah.
Is another change. I think you're talking more about a role, or some sort of reflection of a parent, you know?
Yes, like, right, yes, yeah, I think, because I was thinking that the whole ceremony is sort of prescribed by tradition and/or requirements, but if there's some room to, yeah, maybe have them up there being one of the people shaking hands, so, yeah.
To me, that's part of the principal's role of the ceremony.
Right.
That would be a challenge, just physically, with the number of classes that we have. I mean, I go to the graduation, for example, at the collaborative, which is a very small number of students, and their parents do have a much more collaborative role, they're invited at the end to speak, for example, make comments if they choose, and that's, you know, a unique situation, and obviously not something you could do in large numbers, but.
Right.
But there may be something.
I think Michelle's talking about, if a teacher has a child who's graduating, that that specific teacher would be able to shake their hands.
Yes, I'm sorry, I was just talking about, yes.
That's what she was talking about, as opposed to.
Then they would be coming right from where they sit now.
Yeah.
But, again, yeah, that's problematic, because then if we're going to say, it can't just be teachers, it needs to be open to all public, all staff of the schools, well, then they're not sitting on the field like the teachers, so then do we allow them to sit on the field? I mean, you have to think about all of this.
And then is it a teacher at elementary school?
Yeah, it's just, it's a slippery slope.
So this is a first reading, so we can readdress this at the next meeting.
We'll leave that with Rick.
Okay.
Can I just, just throw in a thought? If, if we do stay with, with the, with the thinking that a current or former member of the school committee may participate in the diploma ceremony, I'm, I'm not comfortable with the idea of deleting the student, foreign exchange student who's lived with the family.
Okay.
I mean, if you're with the family, you're with the family.
So, keeping it to just a student, their, her, his or her own child, or a student who lived with the family, but deleting the relative is okay?
We didn't want it to become the godchildren or the granddaughter, we wanted to try, to Eileen's point, keep it more precise and simple, because you get into that gray area.
Second cousin twice removed.
That's like that, so we just wanted to be.
Well, maybe we can just say, or a student, an exchange student who live with, yeah.
Yeah.
No, I agree with you, if you come here from a foreign country and live in somebody's home, it's like you're their child.
Temporary child.
You could say own child, including one who has come from a foreign country or is a foreign exchange student.
Well, or we could have to say that you are the guardian of, just make sure we're.
Yeah, it actually should be guardian.
Politically correct here, okay, so we will clean that up for the next.
Okay.
Meeting. Six point six, to review proposed revisions to policy three point one as recommended by the policy subcommittee.
Okay, this is a, yet another look at, and I believe a vote, hopefully.
No, this is a first reading.
Shoot. On the ever-ongoing issue of what the school committee does, so basically, we used suggested revisions from our prior discussions and some investigation into both school, Mass General Law and discussion with the Mass Association of School Committee, that put them into, the changes are in red in what you see there, incorporated those, and essentially beefed up section number one, which is the power to select, evaluate, and terminate the superintendent, and added in everyone else that we have to approve, which includes the assistant superintendent, business, school business officer, special education administrator, school physician, school nurses, which is a little bit of a sticking point, because Dot brought it to our attention that the school nurses are actually part of the union, so technically speaking, they have moved out of this purview, however, when we asked Mask about it, he recommended that since it's actually in the law, the nurses are written into the law, that we leave it in here and just going forward, officially approve nurses to comply with the law, but obviously their status as in the union would not change, so hopefully that's okay. And. And then other changes are, as discussed before, sort of, you know, adding in words here and there to tweak the language. I do think that one thing that's not on what's in your packet, sort of last minute, I realized that there's a lot of Mass General Laws that aren't referenced here that should be. And that part number one is sort of all over the place in, in Mass General Law. It's in chapter 71, 76, 71B, you know, relative to each specific, each specific position. The positions are in 71, section 53, supervisor intendant is 76, section 19. So we need to add all those in, and I have those written down. So if there are any other suggestions, let us know. But hopefully, we'll be able to vote on this and hand it off to community outreach.
I just have a question. Who is our supervisor or attending?
That would be Dr. Calo.
No kidding?
Used to be called the, what, truities?
The officer?
In a van.
Go around, drive around, collect them on the street.
Get the ammo control. Have dual use of the truck. Okay.
So please pass along any further suggestions.
All right. So now, next. 6.7, to act on the appointments of the 2017 School Building Committee. So, as introduction, for the audience at home, town meeting established, this year's town meeting established a school building committee, the 2017 School Building Committee, to address the situation with foster school. There are seven members to this committee. The town moderator is to appoint two members, the school committee, three members, and the board of selectmen, two members. The town moderator has already appointed two members, and we will vote tonight on our three members. And the board of selectmen are planning a vote on July 25th. The MSBA guidelines, which is what we've been following in hope that we get accepted into their programs, request that a town appoint members of the community who are knowledgeable in educational mission, function of facility, architecture, engineering, construction, and other relevant expertise, as well as other staff members from the school department and the town who will also serve on the MSBA committee. On June 28th, the school committee held a public meeting, publicly posted working session, where we discussed the 14 applicants who submitted talent bank applications for this committee. And we evaluated, we talked about the skills that we would find most valuable for the committee, and then discussed the different candidates and their skills as well. And at that time, we prioritized some of the candidates based on their applications. And as well, myself and Eileen Calnan sat in on most of the interviews that were done with the town moderator and the board of selectmen for the talent bank applications. And we also subsequently had additional phone conversations with a few of the people. So at this point, they, everyone has the summary chart in their packet. Oh, Dot, can you not put this?
We're not.
Okay. All right. I would request that when we talk about people, we refer to them by number until we have voted. And once we've voted them, we can say the names of the people, just because if someone's not selected by us, we will then pass the remaining names to the board of selectmen for them to select the final two. So the, and these are in order by category of we had decided who we felt would be critical to the committee, beneficial, alternate, and other, were our categories from our working sessions. And they are numbered by, alphabetically by category. So the first, one through four, were the remaining people we felt would be critical to the committee. We had identified five, and one of them was selected by the town moderator. And then five and six were considered beneficial. Seven and eight were considered alternate. So, so at this time, I will take a motion, if anyone would like to nominate people that we can then discuss.
Well, I'll just get the, I'll get the conversation started. I think in order to achieve a balance of skills with the candidates that have previously been appointed by the town moderator, I would like to make a motion to appoint candidates one, two, and three to the 2017 School Building Committee.
Do I have a second?
And since those were three of the five that we said we want, that we felt their skills were important, and one of the fives already been selected by the town moderator, I'll, I'll second that, because they were on our radar screen.
Okay, so discussion.
I believe number four should be considered as part of the top threes.
I would, I would join Carlos in that concern. I'm, I'm, I'm concerned that if number four is not kicked up to one through three, we're taking an unnecessary chance that he, that, that, that number four would be selected at the next round. I personally have worked with him. And, and I would, I would, I would recommend, I would, I would, I would recommend that we somehow figure out a way to kick number four up into the top three.
And my, my, and I will speak to, well, obviously, number three. I would feel very strongly about as being one of the individuals. But I happen to sit in on the interviews for number one and two, so I can speak personally to the fact that I was blown away by the skills and talents that those two individuals could offer. And they're completely different sets of skills and talents as well. My feeling is, as regards number four, that's a skill that we all know has to be here. So there are only a few people with that skill to choose from. So the selectmen have two picks. They're going to have to pick somebody in that category, because somebody from that category has to be on the board. And, and I, knowing the circumstances, would hope that, that the selectmen would, would perhaps be inclined to pick that person. Whereas I don't know if they are seeing the value of, I don't know whether they're valuing numbers one and two as much as I do, having sat in on those interviews and being really impressed with them.
And I agree with you on two, and on two and three, fully. It's just that, you know, versus one and four, I believe four is much stronger.
I think four we need, but one, the breadth of experience that that particular individual brings for all levels of expertise from design to environmental to, you know, from the, from the ground up is impressive and, and spans many categories. It doesn't just fit into one category. That's why I was so very impressed with the skill set of number one. And it's a hard decision. I wish we could do one through four. But we can't. And that's why, if I'm going to have to rely on the selectmen's picks, I'm more comfortable relying on them in the category that's left.
That is right. That was difficult for us to come second, you know.
Yep.
Eileen, were, were the selectmen, did you, did you sit in with the selectmen when, when one and two?
Yes, but we didn't have any kind of conversation about what we felt about the interview or what we felt about the candidate after we were done. So I have no, I have no feedback as to how the selectmen felt about numbers one and two, if that's your question. Do I think if we don't pick one, the selectmen will pick one? I have no reading on that. Whereas if we don't pick four, do I think there's a good chance the selectmen might? I would hope so.
I can tell you that the selectmen have asked me that they would like to know what categories of people we would like them to focus on. So we can, they, they prefer us not to recommend specific people, but they did say, for providing them guidance of categories of people.
And that's why I feel like if we say that's the category that still needs to be filled, four tends to rise to the top just based on, on skills and would be the logical choice, you know, and hopefully would be who they would choose. Sure, there's no guarantee, but there's also no guarantee that they'll pick one if we don't pick one. So that's why I was leaning more towards the, to one, and hoping that they would pick four.
It's a gamble.
It's a gamble, but we're losing, we could lose somebody that was in our top five, no matter which way we go. So I was just trying to, this whole process is kind of crazy. We're left in, being in a position of having to second guess what the selectmen will do.
Yeah.
And I had a stronger feeling that they would hopefully pick four and have no feeling about whether they would pick one. So that was why I was willing to go with that gamble.
Would, would this help? And would this be something that would make sense? Suppose we, as a group, select one, two, and four. Three, hang on a minute. Three takes, takes it upon, he happens to be a male himself, to lobby with the two selectmen, the three, the, the three selectmen for the two slots.
That's an interesting.
That's, yeah, that's an interesting.
I'd be willing to do that.
But thought on past experiences on that?
It would leave the school committee, however, with no, not a liaison who is a member.
Right. Awesome.
Well, but then if we, if the selectmen are looking for our input on what they need on this committee, and we say we need this, there is only one choice. So that makes it really simple.
I mean, I don't know that there's anything. The law says that we need to appoint, and these are the appointers. It doesn't say that people who are doing the appointing couldn't collaborate together.
John, does the law say that?
The school committee has to be represented.
To be one of the, because on the MSBA committee, it says.
No, it doesn't, it doesn't say that.
Yes, it does.
What?
It's on the list.
That there has to be a school committee member.
A member or a liaison?
Member.
Minimum of one.
Okay, well, I think we just answered our own question.
Right, because that does, so it'll be required to.
I want you to understand, I happen to know a number three, friend of mine. And, and he would like to be, I know, he's told me he'd like to be on this committee. So I don't want you to misinterpret what I'm saying. And I looked at this, I thought about it.
I think we would, I don't know.
It's not the intent.
Yeah, I know.
It's not the intent of the law.
Right.
And the other thing, true, Liza, I'm not sure if you had an opportunity to talk to the selectmen, but I thought we had a little concern about gender balance.
Well.
Well, we've never had gender balance. We've had.
Well, it's consideration, right?
So Carlos, I will just say, yes, we talked about that at our working session. And I shared our thoughts from our working session. And those thoughts were not completely taken into account. And so, I, I am concerned about it, but I don't know how much other people are. And so, I think we should pick. I think we should pick the people that we think will do the very best job, the three individual people that we're most proud of, and we think will do the best job at this point, considering.
I think we, we need to look at skills and pick. Again, I agree with Liza.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I'm a female, and I'm, I would like to do this gender blind. I, to the extent that we need skills, not.
And there is academic research that a gender mixed committee makes the best decisions. Dot and I watched the academic presentation and, and the research that backed it up. But we didn't have the chance to present that to the.
That there are probably an additional five or six people that will be ex officio members of that committee, that, that fully participate in everything but the vote, and the recommendations, and the discussions, and so on. So we've had a five-two committee since East School inception of that committee. And we've only had two changes over the years, and they've both been males for males.
I think we should keep three out of the intent.
Yeah, and, you know, it sounds great in theory, but then it gets to be a little bit of a, perhaps inappropriate maneuver.
Yeah. I, I mean, I think one and four both have specific skills that we can advocate to the selectmen, that those skills, we feel very strongly, are needed on the committee. So.
Well, maybe what we need to do is.
So I, yeah. I'd leave it to you guys to make the proposal.
I'm, I'm thinking maybe we should make a motion on two and three.
Okay.
And then we might have to do a separate vote on one versus four.
So Cynthia, do you want to amend your motion?
So I'll amend my motion to appoint candidates two and three to the 2017 School Building Committee.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion on two and three? No? All those in favor?
Hi.
Okay, that's unanimous.
Could I bring up a related topic?
Yes.
Is that, so still remaining after these appointments, and they're going to make their next appointment, I mean, their appointments on.
July 25th.
July 25th. So, and then subsequent to that, does that mean that you would need to come back to vote? And then subsequent to that.
Oh, she doesn't mean we're putting off the third person.
No, we're gonna do that right now.
Make a separate vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We just don't have a, we have a clear consensus on two and three.
We want to get two and three out of the way.
Right, no. Just wanted to get them out of the way.
So I won't have to come back, because it's really about the same thing, and that is the timeline. Because subsequent to their vote on the 25th, there still has to be another vote on the chair.
Right.
And that could be a more than one-step process. Bottom line is that we really had hoped to get going this summer on looking particularly at the site.
Right.
And to be able to perhaps have some, or some review of it, or some borings or something done to give, give us a better idea about where, or if, or how we could either, either newly construct or substantially remodel that, that building. And that time is running, is running short.
So the discussion that I've had is that after the selectmen decide thereto, then the, the chairs and the moderator would talk about the process for selecting the chair.
Which doesn't require a posted meeting.
Right. And then something, I wanted to get some input from the committee tonight about what your view is. about what your view is about the selection of the chair. So we're going as fast as we can.
I know.
Wait a minute, my, my East personality has been coming through in this, in this whole
Our personalities now.
Process of appointing this committee.
But it sounded so simple, even first.
I know, because I established, I established my process. Other people didn't quite go with it. Anyway.
On the top, since we're on the topic of chair, the selectmen, I understand that will be making their two choices on the 25th.
Right.
Would we not then, at that point, we'll know all seven members?
Correct.
Would we not, on post on our schedule for the 31st, a discussion of, of our recommendation for chair for?
We could do that. Yeah. Yeah, we could have, as our working session, during our working session, we could have a conversation. We don't have to make a decision.
I was going to recommend that.
Okay, that's a good, I like that.
Okay, so let's, moving forward.
So on the 31st, we have a working session to talk about our long-range planning. So we can have, we can put on the agenda just a consensus conversation of the chair process. Yeah, okay.
Once we know.
Great idea, thank you. Okay, let's get back to.
All right, so with that said, since I'm the big proponent for candidate number one, I will make a motion to appoint candidate number one as our other individual to the building committee.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion on candidate one.
I'll say that my reasoning for originally proposing candidate number one is essentially along the same lines as, as Aileen outlined. I think that candidate's unique experience is something that makes that person someone we should vote on this evening. I agree. I think the skills for that, those open two positions, we can, you said, Aileen, that leave it up to the selectmen to decide.
I would, I would interject that, and I have to fess up that I don't know candidate one. I, I don't think I do. I do know candidate four only from, well, you can't attend meetings when someone is on the board and not strike up a relationship. I, to my way of thinking, the skill set that number four presents at this point is more important to me than the skill set that number one offers. And that is not meant to diminish number one's skill sets, that's not what I'm saying. But number four's skill set, that significant experience, I remind people that, that, that number four participated both in the East as well as the middle school project. And the skill set that number four presents is absolutely necessary for this committee.
Well, and I agree, but that's why I say that's a skill set the selectmen are going to have to pick somebody of that skill set, because that's one of the things that has to be in the committee. So unfortunately, they will be left with, they do need to pick somebody in that skill set range. And I'm just going on the assumption that they're going to realize of the individuals that have that skill set on this list that he is the most, that number four is the most qualified. And hopefully we'll select him.
Now, I, I hesitate passing, passing it down the road, but I guess you know how I'm going to vote.
Yeah, but by virtue of voting second, we're, we're kind of passing, we're passing more than one thing down the road.
Well, we, we already have the skill set of number one.
Not, not, not that same at all, not even close.
I'm sorry.
I mean, and not, not, I'm not talking personalities. I'm talking the actual practice involved is completely, completely different.
Yeah.
Well, I trust your input, but I will stick with number four. Thank you.
Yeah, I, yeah, I mean, I'm trusting Aileen's input here because she, you know, met with them all and had the discussions with them. I, I think the risk that people are concerned about is that, that there's several people with that skill set that we're not picking. And if the selectmen go with someone else with that skill set, then number four.
It is, that is a risk.
Can they pick two people with the same skill set?
Yeah, they can.
Okay, okay.
They could.
I mean, that's.
There were at least two on the middle school, at least two on the middle school.
Okay, then I think that is less a risk than I thought. Because I'm not sure the other candidates who are left.
So we vote. So we get a vote.
Okay.
We vote, yeah.
So we're going to vote, all those in favor of Aileen's motion of candidate one.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And all those opposed?
No, don't do it opposed, do it the other way. Who's in favor of number four?
Or who's in favor of number four? Okay.
I'm sorry, can you, who, so everybody was?
Ed and Carlos are in favor of number four.
He was, he was semantics.
Gotcha.
I didn't want to.
Okay. So we are going, I will share this with the selectmen and tell them that the one category that we need them to fill is that category. And, and they are aware of our comments. And so we will trust them to do the right thing, as, that's all we can do. Right? And then, and then we will have the full committee, or announce the full committee at that time, so.
If we pass on the vote to self in the future, maybe the committee should still sit down at the table together and hash it all out all at once, instead of this.
Has this been how it's been done in the past? Is this how we have to?
I believe it has.
It's my first go-around with this, so that's why.
I would suggest that you share your individual thoughts with the different parties. Because I think the power of more voices would be more impactful than if it came from me again.
On what topic are you referring to?
On the process.
Process.
The process of with three diff, personally, I would have hoped we could have had one conversation together and then we can go our separate ways. But.
And, you know, in the future, and I don't even know if this is possible, I wonder if we could give some thought to, with something like this, where there are three different boards voting on people, unlike the other appointments that the town makes to different committees and whatnot, where only they are selecting from the talent bank pool. Perhaps, you know, I know you were invited to sit in and I filled in, but it would have been nice if everybody could have seen these people. Maybe they could, like H cam, the interviews of these people, so that everybody, if they, if you wanted to sit down and compare candidate number one to candidate number four, you could have watched the interview. I think that would have been helpful.
I mean, in fairness, we could have called everybody in for interviews ourselves. You know, I think these types of committees are few and far between and that the officials involved, we're all elected actually, have had turnover and haven't been involved with these types of committees before. And so, you know, I think that's some of it, is that, that institutional knowledge wasn't the, I mean, even when was the last time you were involved with the school building committee appointed was East School? Because the middle school one rolled over.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah, it was 2007, 67.
Yes, that was 10 years ago.
The only other group one that I'm aware of, well, there may be some that are strictly on that side, but when a school committee leaves in the middle of his or her term and it's both the selectmen and the school committee, then maybe the school committee get to vote. But the last two of those that I can recall that we've done, you all sat in the same room.
Yep.
At the same time as, as kind of equals, not one meeting and another being before or after the fact.
So. So I, I would welcome you to express your own thoughts, maybe at the end of the process of, I think that would be productive. So, and, you know, it's, I don't, really don't feel like it's criticism. I think it's, it's just observation. Okay, 6.8, to act on the proposed school committee meeting calendar for 2017, 2018. We are doing this now because Kay cannot join us for our August meeting. And we wanted to make sure that everyone had a chance to look at it. And I understand that Dr. Gallo checked religious holidays and it's a pretty routine calendar.
Yes, it is.
Except for Tuesday, October 10th, which is the day after Columbus Day, so.
And a lot of things, I mean, it would be nice to say the first and third or the second and fourth or that kind of thing, but because of vacation periods and holidays and so on, sometimes just gets out of kilter.
Are we fessing up on days that we're not going to be able to be here?
Because I already know one, I can't be here.
Yep.
Is that the?
Yep, that's the.
The point.
At the point?
January 22nd, I can't be here.
Say that again, Ed?
No, I'm just.
Just wondering if we need you to tell.
Are we fessing, I, okay, in Ed's case, he will not, he's not going to be able to be here on December 4th. Not that that is a reason.
And for me, it's just January 22nd.
Nor will he be here on April 9th.
Well, and it is valid because of more than.
Well, let's look at those and see what implications there would be if there were a change.
When I peek, I didn't really see a whole lot.
So. So December 4th.
You see that, what does that mean, Carlos?
I don't even know. How many there is? If we were to have the two meetings in December, having one on the 12th and 19th would be two in a row.
Can we do a three around the fifth?
Is it just the fourth?
No, it's, it's.
Google Docs, like.
January.
No. She's. I was going to go with Ed's two things first.
Oh, this was, this was April 9th. Is that the whole week?
Say again?
Is that April 9th, is that the whole week?
No, it's, it's, April 9th is a Monday and, and would be available the preceding Monday or, or the following Mondays are because it is a holiday.
But the whole week you're gone, the ninth week.
No, I get back on the night.
Oh. So theoretically, you could do the 10th.
Oh, yeah.
Anyone have an objection to Tuesday, the 10th?
What objection to that?
In January?
No, April.
April of 2019.
April in 2012.
Sorry, all the dates weren't.
Actually, you can change all of them to Tuesday, that's better.
Well, there's one we'd be changing to Tuesday.
Yeah, that's fine.
See, I like the first and third Mondays of the month better.
Well, except that we'd miss a lot of Mondays, I mean, as we do now. But.
That's why I was thinking, you know, Tuesday, is there a reason we pick Monday?
It's always been Monday.
It's always been Monday tradition.
The selectmen are meeting Tuesdays now because it's the late night the town hall is open. So sometimes, sometimes they're doing Thursdays, but.
I just changed it.
Do you see the change?
All right, so I, April 10th, that's probably, I mean, we need an early April because of before-town meeting, we're probably going to have to be revoting the budget, so.
So the problem is if we go to, we could go to April.
I'm talking about the 10th.
We're just Tuesday.
Yeah, but we're just talking about doing a Tuesday instead of Monday. We're talking about the 10th.
Yeah, just move it that one day.
Can, can you, I mean, what do you, what else is?
I'm sure they consider it.
So they're saying until the 9th, just go to 10th.
Yeah, I was just looking to see the word, not the suggestion. We can't go to the 16th.
And the 23rd is the, was the town meeting.
We already got a meeting.
Yeah, at 6:30.
I mean, I'm okay with the 10th, I just.
Okay. So we'll do the 10th, April 10th, but we'll stick with the December 4th, is that all right, Ed? Okay.
So April 10th?
April 10th. So we accommodated one of Ed's, and then January 22nd, Aileen.
And I only, and it would, it would be the 22nd and the 23rd, so, and that's the only one for me for the whole year. So I, you know, really, we don't have to file up everybody's schedule for one.
And we'll have plenty of budget meetings.
Yeah, I was going to say, we'll be together for the, we'll have plenty of other times to cover.
So the only change is April 10th, right?
Yep.
And Carlos already made the change in the talk.
Yeah, but I didn't request that change, I just changed for you.
Oh, wow, that should have happened fast. I'm not used to this.
All right, okay. All right, so that's good. Any 48-hour items?
Do we need a vote on this or no?
I guess, sure, why not?
It is to act on.
Yeah.
Then I will make a motion that we approve the school committee meeting calendar for the school year 2017, 2018, with that one change of the meeting from April 9th to April 10th, 2018. I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, 48 hours.
I just don't, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify, we're looking at other calendars relative to the school committee. And I think we still have an open date on the fall planning meeting as to either the weekend, but whether it would be on the Saturday or Sunday of that weekend. But you may not know schedules yet, such as parent visits to colleges and those kinds of things that come up. Just so, and just making you aware that.
Yeah, does anybody have any, does anybody know sports schedules or anything that weekend? Can we, can we pick whether we want to do a Saturday morning or a Sunday morning that weekend? What would be better for people? We usually do like eight to 12.
Personally, I'd rather do Sunday morning.
You're talking about either September 9th or September 10th?
Yes.
That's what we designated before.
Well, I'll be either one, but I would vote for Saturday.
I don't think I'm going to be around on the 9th. Or the 10th.
Or the 10th.
Or the 10th.
That's fine.
Don't do Saturday.
What would, what do you?
Either.
I would say the Saturday, just because Monday, because it's a school committee Monday night. So just giving us a little bit of a break in which we may, like, Sunday and then I'll come back Monday.
Oh, you don't want to spend two days in a row with those trainees.
I mean, I'm not talking about just me. I don't want to be greedy.
That's fine, just, that's fine. Carlos, you, you out that whole weekend?
I'd be in New York. Unless it changes.
What do use your hands?
Is there anybody, that's our planning meeting, so I'd love for you to be there.
Carlos, can you come on Sunday?
I'm not sure if I'm going to be here at this moment.
Oh, Saturday or Sunday?
Yes.
Got it.
Does the 16th or the 17th work for anybody?
I am away that weekend. That's part, that was part of the reason, we talked about that when we even picked the 9th and 10th. Back then was because I already knew I was gone the 16th and 17th.
And then the NEAS was the following.
And the NEAS was the following with that, yeah. That's why we picked the 9th or the 10th.
Okay.
How many hours you planning? Three hours?
Three or four.
Do we do it in the evening, sort of like, you know, Wednesday night?
It's a real long day for us.
Yeah.
You know?
We will. We will-
Because we gotta take our time.
For you guys.
We need to have Saturday or Sunday, you can both.
Why don't we confirm it on July 31st?
You go.
Okay.
Okay.
That's a good plan.
I think of some possibilities, they could work.
Yeah, 'cause we'll probably get, have another time to get together too, so, we'll talk about that.
So the other thing on the 48, is there something I forgot to mention, but last, the 14th was what? I sent an email to O'Connes, Senator Patrick O'Connes' aide, actually asking them to put in good words for us with Debbie Goldberg about MSBA.
Yeah.
So they're aware of it, because I think if they put a little pressure in letter of recommendations, maybe she'll act up, because I just found out that they did in fact approve the application for women, for one of the schools.
Oh, women?
Yeah. So, but I don't know whether they applied this year, or if they had already applied last year, that I don't know. So I was sort of like, you know, hoping that we would there first.
Yeah. Okay. All right, subcommittee project reports, we've heard from policy tonight, you've heard from special ed.
And outreach will be meeting on August 1st. I'll be next meeting.
And salary negotiations, we are meeting with the HEA Unit A tomorrow.
And, so then July 31st, we will have a working session about the long-range plan. We had a great meeting with the staff, July 11th, and then we have our input from the community outreach, so we can start putting together more of a plan, and I will send an agenda and outline of that this week, because I'm on vacation next week, so I will get, do that agenda this week, because I'm not gonna have a computer with me when I'm on vacation.
Well, I'll take mine to the conference too, because I'm gonna be in Falmouth, Wednesday Thursday, correct?
Okay. So, nine.
Our long-range planning met on July 11th.
Yep.
Jamie, I'll give, Dr. Jamie, I can give you a set of outstanding minutes that I have in front of me, and I thank our corresponding secretary for this, but just to hit some high points, we talked about some upgrades and some renovations at the high school multipurpose field, the stands. We discussed the fact that the track surface has needed some patches, 14 to be in fact, and working along those lines, there, we okayed the removal at the recommendation of the town engineer for the posts that are on the lawn from the exit of the parking lot at the high school, going south on Union Street to the entrance of the far parking lot, these are posts that are positioned between the road and the sidewalk, and that's in the works, I'll get you a copy of that, Dr. Jamie. Important points, the Foster School facilities and maintenance department will be replacing over 100 steam traps, to see if we can't, certainly delay and maybe even rectify these pipes that are, that continue to break. East School, the poured rubber will be placed, in fact, the East School playground citation that we received, the remedy at East School poured rubber will be placed and put in place this summer. And we had a discussion about issues that we would, we as a group will bring up at our planning session, and I would, did I forget anything that you want to add? I'll get you a copy of the, a lot of topics that we talked about. Good meeting.
High school roof is almost done, it's just slashed.
Say again?
The high school roof is just about completed. The high school roof-
Oh, high school roof, yeah. It's a, it's a bit of a challenge to get up there, but it's a great view, I'll tell you, those of you who have, who've ever been up on the high school roof. It's got a scuttle ladder that is really tough on your hands. It really is, I went up there with Katie as well.
And I'm impressed.
Scourge the students from climbing up there, I'm sure.
Okay. Great, so, motion to move to executive session, we have a short update to provide. Elaine, do you wanna?
I'll make a motion to move to executive session, not to return to open session for the purpose of discussing strategies with respect to matters related to the collective bargaining agreement with HEA Unit A, the public discussion of which may be detrimental to the committee's bargaining position.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Shall we go in order?
Sorry.
Aye.
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 I would suggest, since we anticipate this to be short, that we remain here.
Okay.
Because it takes us just as long to relocate as-
Oh.
Hello, here it is.